Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem, and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
And welcome to the November 9th City Council meeting. We're glad to see everybody here as we continue to try to move forward in doing the people's business. We're going to begin this meeting as we begin all of our meetings, and that is by asking God's presence and His blessing. And Pastor Adrian Chester, I think, is going to bring that. I don't see him, so I'll go to our resident preacher, Dr. Isaiah Hughley. Mr. City Manager, would you mind opening us with prayer, please, sir?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you will pray with me in accordance to my faith tradition. Heavenly Father, we pause this morning to say thank you. We thank you for your many blessings upon our city. We ask for your guidance and direction as we deliberate this morning. Touch the heart and minds of these, your elected officials, that they will work in the best interest of your citizens, 206,922 citizens of this city. We ask that you guide our minds, our thoughts, and, Heavenly Father, just continue to watch over us. We know that there's violent crime going on and other things going on, but we know that all power is in your hand. So touch these elected officials, touch our citizens. Let us all be on one accord with. And let what we do for this city of Columbus be in your best interest in what you would have us to do. Heavenly Father, these things we ask in your Son Jesus' name. Let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, you have been provided the minutes from the October 26th meeting. There's a motion from Mayor Pro Tem to receive them, and I think I heard Counselor Tucker on the second. Any edits or questions about the minutes? Hearing none? If you are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. All right, they are approved. And I'm gonna go off script just a quick moment. We've got some special guests in our council meeting today, and I want to take just a minute to call them up and let us welcome them. We have the transition group from Moscone County School District. These are from Hardaway. They're accompanied by Lila Young, the Transition Coordinator for the district, as well as Robin Barber Hodge, who's the Director of Operations and Support. Annette Harris is Job Skills Trainer. Marcy Williams, who I'm told they can do nothing without, is the bus driver. And then, of course, their teacher is Julie Friar. And so I'm gonna give them two quick minutes to kind of tell us about this amazing program and introduce these amazing young people.
All right, so again, my name is Lila Young. I'm the Transition Coordinator for the school district. I'm gonna talk quickly because we only have two minutes. So across our school district, we have eight transition programs. These are the Hardaway Hawks that's helping adults work, know, and succeed. This is where we take our second and third-year seniors with intellectual disabilities. We take them out into the community, and we teach them job skills, social skills. We also teach them independent living skills. We prepare them as much as possible for independent living once they exit high school. So again, eight classes across the district. I have one program at Total Systems where they go and attend class at Total Systems, and they go out on the floor with a peer mentor, and they learn how to work. This is vitally important to our community because we have a lot of students who are intellectually disabled, and they are in need of jobs once they exit. So Ms. Julie Friar thought it was vitally important today that she attend and our students attend. She's teaching them not only about the voting process, but she pulled up each one of their houses and identified their city council members, which is impressive. We have not had another teacher in our district do that yet, so I'm super proud of her. And then she's also, you guys are talking about PALS. Well, that's one of our community-based instruction sites. So we take our students out into the community to learn how to work amongst their peers, their non-disabled peers. So it's super important, and I'm very, very proud of Ms. Julie Friar. So at this time, I'll let each of the students come up and introduce themselves. They're gonna say their name and what school they're originally from.
Hello, my name's Taylor, and I'm from Carver High School.
My name is Michael Powell. I'm from Shaw High School.
Hello, I'm Christopher Seawright, and I'm from Shaw High School.
Hello, my name is Angie Baudette, and I'm in Carver High School.
Hello, my name is Eric Guthrie, and I'm from Jordan High School.
Hello, my name is Jacob Minosa. I'm Shaw High School.
Can our teacher come introduce herself?
Yes, please.
Julie Friar, Hardaway High School.
Annette Harris, Hardaway High School.
Marcy Wilson, I represent all the schools.
Well, Lila, this is a treat for us. We appreciate y'all visiting with us this morning. These are truly amazing young people. And I urge all these counselors who they now know they're in your district to get to know them. And we just thank you so much. And we thank the teachers, too, for pouring into these young people. And you guys have had an extremely difficult year in which to continue to further the mission that you have taken on, and we cannot thank you enough. So on behalf of the entire city, we want to say thank you for what you have done with not only these young people, but the people in our schools across our county.
Thank you. And shameless plug, if you know a business that's looking for an employee, my name's Lila Young. You can find me on the district website. Our students make phenomenal employees.
And Lila, I'm gonna have my assistant send you the contact information for Erin, who is in our HR department, because we have a Mayor's Commission on Persons with Disabilities, and that is one of their main focuses, is trying to put together young people and any individual.
I'm on it.
All right, well, good. Well, I won't have Erin bother you then.
I'll still bother Erin, though.
But we need to make sure that we're doing what we need to do with that commission to help you all achieve what you're trying to achieve.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Counsel, for indulging me. The next thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call up a resolution. We had our warden at Moscone County Prison retire. He had put in a lot of hard years here at MCP and did a phenomenal job, and has an incredible staff. But we are pleased today, I am pleased today, to bring to council a recommendation and a resolution appointing Mr. Herbert Walker as the new warden of the Moscone County Prison. I'm gonna ask Mr. Walker if he will come to the podium with his family. We have given counsel the information on Mr. Walker, and it has been published and provided to all of our media partners. And I am thrilled now to offer up the resolution appointing him to the position of Warden of Moscone County Prison. If we'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve from the Mayor Pro Tem. I heard multiple seconds. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Walker, welcome. We're gonna give you the podium, let you introduce your amazing family, including the boss.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Again, I'm Herbert Walker, and I am pleased to accept this promotion to Warden of Moscone County. I'm about to bust out of my suit, Mayor. I'm so excited. I know my family. I've gotten on their nerves all week. I've YouTube Moscone County Prison. I've looked at all of the information. I went back to city council meetings from years and years and years back and just getting myself familiar with the area. And I'm just exclaiming to the council, you have not just hired a warden. I'm asking the council and the members and the citizens of Moscone County to accept us, adopt us into your community. And I'm gonna give you 110%, I promise you.
Introduce your family.
Okay. My wife, Patrice Walker. My 18-year-old daughter, Yasmin Walker. And of course, the boss of the family. Here's Courtney. Turn around. This is the 8-year-old boss of the family, sir.
As it should be. Well, we are delighted that you are joining us. We look forward to an outstanding working relationship. And of course, as we have seen, particularly during this pandemic, MCP is a vital, vital part of our ability to deliver services to our citizens. We have our two deputy wardens here today, Deputy Warden Thomas, Deputy Warden King. And they do an incredible job. They will be critical to your success, and we look forward to that partnership bearing fruit.
Thank you, sir. They already introduced themselves to me, and I appreciate it. They already made me feel welcome.
Welcome. If you would, Counsel, let's welcome Mr. Walker one more time, please. It's an exciting day. Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, and then officially, counsel has adopted the appointing resolution now. Clerk Davis will send this resolution to the Georgia Department of Corrections for their approval and their files also. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you. It's a little bit different process going through the Department of Corrections, but we're excited about it moving through there and making this completely official. Thank you for bringing it up. I will say, too, that the city manager and I had an opportunity to visit Moscone County Prison, and there's a partnership with the Technical College System of Georgia's Columbus Technical College. And they have a mobile training unit that they're using to teach the inmates out there welding. And we had an opportunity to take a look at that program and take a tour of the facility, and it's outstanding. They'll be able to, when they have earned their release, they will have a marketable skill that they can take into the marketplace, and it will provide them an opportunity to earn a living wage. So there are a lot of proactive, good things going on at the MCP. We usually give a little update on COVID, and the news very briefly continues to be positive. The average, the rolling seven-day average, as well as the average per 100,000 residents over two weeks continues to improve. We have less than 50 people in our hospitals, and we continue to see things improve on behalf of the city. We are obviously a little concerned, and we continue to watch the numbers as we head into the holiday season. But we will, we just want to thank the residents for the way they have reacted to this, continuing to monitor some of their requirements of distancing and masking. So we are grateful for the way that the community has responded. All right, and next on our agenda this morning, we have Columbus Water Works President Steve Davis, and they're going to walk us through a water and sewer rate study.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. I would like to thank y'all for the important roles y'all play in our community, representing the citizens and also our customers at Columbus Water Works. I know certainly during these pandemic times, it's been very challenging. I can empathize with you there, so certainly appreciate you and your roles. And also, congratulations on your sales tax approval. Look forward to all the good enhancements in our community that that will generate, and wish you good success on those projects. So, and also appreciate your time for allowing us a little bit of time on your agenda to have a public forum. As you know, our Board, Board of Water Commissioners, has authority to set water rates. We had a meeting with them October 18th, and they approved us coming forward into the public comment period. We had a virtual town hall meeting on October 28th. And of course, now today, we're having this public forum. And then the next step will be Monday to go back to our board for them to review approving the water sewer rate increase. So that just kind of gives you a little highlight of the progression. What I will do on the agenda, I'll review 2021 and the rate drivers, and then the recommendation of the rate increases will be presented by Joe Crea. Joe is with Raftellus Financial. They are a national organization. I think they have over 600 clients in the municipal and water and wastewater area that they provide financial services for. They're very experienced. They've been providing our rolling financial plan for about 20 years now, starting in 2002. And I think Joe has been probably with them helping us out for probably 12, 14 years. So he will give the recommended 2022 rate. And then he will hand it off to Alex Hinton, our Chief Financial Officer, and she will talk about some of the customer assistance options that we're considering or working on. So 2021, even in spite of a pandemic, our staff continued to do an outstanding job in providing clean, safe, reliable drinking water. This is just an example of some of the awards that they have won. This is fairly typical of CWW. We compete and hold high standards up so we can win these awards. But one of the comments that I've received that kind of puts an exclamation mark behind these awards is I was giving the Garrison Commander a tour of one of our water treatment plants, and he said that often soldiers or their spouses that have been deployed around the world and around the country will say, you know, when they come to Fort Benning, they come to Columbus, Georgia, there's just something unique, there's something special about the water here. You can actually drink it from the tap, and it's good. So kudos to the CWW team. And what we take for granted here in Columbus is we have good, clean, reliable drinking water. So it's not the case around the world, around the country. So that is a high compliment to our team, and I was glad to hear that. So we had the 2021, we did, our board did approve a rate increase, a 3.75% rate increase. And because of COVID and the impact it was potentially having on our customers, we did delay that rate increase, which generally would have taken effect in January. We delayed it till April. And we lost about a half million dollars in revenue as a result of that. And we also instituted some other things that we did on behalf of our customers. We waived delinquent fees. We set up payment plans. We had a moratorium on cutoffs for a while. And those probably cost us another half million dollars in lost revenue and fees. But thank goodness, we're kind of past the worst days, I think, of COVID, and it's nice to certainly be back in city council chambers as opposed to a cavernous space. So hopefully, we'll get back before long without masks. So some of the key drivers, and these are kind of year in, year out, things that drive our cost of doing business, and that is the O and M side of our business and what it takes in terms of supplies, chemicals, materials, labors to provide clean, safe, reliable drinking water. So the O and M side is always a cost driver. Our capital side, we're very capital intensive. We've got water sewer systems spread out over miles and miles with just, if we had to replace all of our assets in today's dollars, it may cost $4 billion. So we have a lot of infrastructure, and keeping that infrastructure in good operable condition is a challenge. And also, another driver is regulatory compliance. We're always faced with new things that are coming down the pipe for us to keep our water and wastewater systems better and better. So here's a pie chart that shows how our revenue, how our expenses are distributed. You can see the dark color there is our operating cost, which represents about 39% of our expenses. The light green, 42%, goes to capital renewal and replacement. The yellow, 6%, that is just financial policies to maintain our bond covenants and coverages and things of that nature. And then a new one that's kind of popped up on the radar screen that everybody's familiar with is these supply chain issues that are driving costs up that were much higher than we had anticipated in our financial planning. And some of those supply chain issues that we're experiencing, our chlorine cost have essentially doubled. And that's critical for our water treatment, drinking water treatment. Our ductile iron pipe price has gone up 20%. The polymers we use to improve our water in the treatment process has gone up 26%. Energy, found out from Georgia Power, that our real-time pricing is going up a lot because natural gas price has gone up a lot, and so their fuel cost gone up. So that's an added cost that's passing to us. And the list just cascades on, and I'm sure you're all aware of that, individualized. So it just gets magnified when you're trying to run a business and have bigger costs in doing so. On our capital side, we're always reinvesting in this infrastructure, trying to stay one step ahead of failure. We did, through Alex's effort and our engineering team, we were able to secure a GIFA loan, a Georgia Environmental Facilities Authority loan of $60 million at an interest rate of 0.13%, which is an outstanding interest rate. So that, when we compare that to what a bond interest rate at the time would have cost us, we've saved about $19 million just in interest fees over the life of that loan. And it also allowed us some capacity to renew infrastructure on kind of an annual basis or a fee basis. So we've got about $23 million in capital renewal and replacement that we'll be doing over five years in addition to the GIFA loan. So ways that CWW tries to really drive our cost efficiency, and I think you'll see some of this maybe come through in some of what Joe has to show you, is we try to really develop and improve our culture around cost efficiency. We're always asking our staff, you know, is this the best price you can get for this? Did you get your competitive pricing? Is there a better, more efficient, more cost-effective way of doing this? So we're always driving that kind of mentality down into the culture of our organization. And we do, particularly in construction, we go out and competitively bid construction projects to make sure we get the best market value. And that's also, we do that for large services, take competitive pricing. And we also use qualified consultants, people who know the business that we're in. And the way that adds value to our rate payers is that we don't have a lot of errors and emissions change orders in construction that would be attributable to poor design or consultants not really knowing their field very well. Another way that we drive this cost efficiency is the process that we've been using for decades, and that is a five-year facility master planning process. We will go in and evaluate all our assets in terms of their condition, their capacity, what regulatory changes may be coming our way. We'll compile all of that into projects to meet whatever those obligations may be. And then we prioritize those projects and then incorporate that into our rate model analysis. So typically, we, I guess, fund about a third of the projects that are identified through that master planning process. So we try to keep our rates low. We try to manage that capital needs in a way that reflects that we care about our customers and how much they pay for the services. And as I mentioned, we also seek the most cost-effective debt financing, and certainly a case of that is with our GIFA loan that I just mentioned. So with that, I'll hand it off to Joe Crea, and he will talk a little about the analysis and the recommended rates.
Steve, we had a counselor with a question. Counselor Tucker?
Can you bring me back after? I'm gonna see what this individual says, because my question is, and I'll just give it to you so you can think about it.
Okay.
With the $1 trillion infrastructure bill that was just passed over the weekend, there are $55 billion for drinking water infrastructure. How are you going to, you know, align yourself with getting some of those allocations of funds for this area, since we're talking about cost efficiency for our citizens?
Yes, yes. Well, even before that has rolled out, a considerable amount of money has come down to the state, to the governor from the Fed, and I think it's to the tune of $4.4, $4.8 billion. A third of it, I think, was for water, wastewater, stormwater. A third was for rural broadband, and then a third was more for kind of economic recovery type things. So we have put in for about $83 million worth of infrastructure improvements through that potential funding source. So we're, it is at the state level. Alex checks it frequently to see the status of all of our projects and what that review process is. So we're certainly optimistic, hopeful, that we think we've made a good case in those projects and that we're leveraging our GIFA loan as some of the match to improve our opportunities that we may actually get some of those awards. So we're optimistic. There again, kudos to Alex for what she has done in that. But we will also be keeping our eye on the other bill that may be coming as well. So thank you for the question.
It was approved this weekend, so it is coming. $55 billion that will be for drinking water infrastructure.
We're always looking for help.
Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I wanna follow up on that, too, and maybe Alex will be the one to address it. Besides what Counselor Tucker is talking about, what, and I understand the structure that you're doing here for good drinking water, but our citizens don't understand that. All they care is what they see on that bill when they receive it. And in saying that, when we were in GMA, and then I have some issues, but I'll go back in my suitcase, which I haven't finished unpacking, I will pull it out. And there was a vendor there that was demonstrating some meters that you can put into the household that would identify immediately where a leak was, instead of the citizen trying to figure out, is it my water? Is my toilet? Is it underneath? And I don't know, maybe Alex or yourself can give me your number, and what I'll do is get that to you. Because as we increase and we understand that we need these items to give good water to our citizens, our citizens doesn't understand this. What they understand is their bill. What they understand is their bill. What they understand is, oh, my God, why is my bill so high? I have a leak. Nobody can find the leak unless you go and tear up all the concrete and all. So if there's technology, besides the technology that you're bringing to us today, that can help save the citizen money, I think that's important for you to look at, because then the citizen wouldn't have a problem if there was an increase in their water, because they would understand it better. So I don't know who, but somebody leave your business.
I can answer that, and I agree that it is an important technology. And we've had it in place. This automatic meter reading is something we've had in place for, I guess, we finished our system maybe five years ago, Alex? I don't know. But it gives us the ability to, if a customer has a higher water bill, we can go in and we can read what their, what a consumption is in 15-minute intervals. And we've helped a lot of customers with this. And what often we will find is they have a toilet with a flapper that's stuck. So it's amazing how much water, without just constantly flowing through your toilet, how much more your water bill will go up. So, and we do send our customer advocate out and meet with these customers and have those conversations, and we've helped a number of them with that technology.
I understand what you're saying. And this is five years ago that you said you had to implement it. But this is a new technology that will tell you exactly where the leak is. So the customer doesn't have to go and go to the extreme of cutting all over their concrete, trying to figure out where it could leak. Your bathroom leak is common. I mean, I had that done. I called in, and a gentleman came, very nice, looked around, and showed me where my problem was, and it was my toilet. But there are leaks that people are having that is not visual, that is not the toilet. It is something, you know, more in-depth, because a lot of the pipelines in the homes are old. We still have homes that have copper.
Yeah. And we do, we also have advanced technology for leaked, for buried pipe leak detection. It's a sonar system that we can listen and we can pinpoint small leaks. And we've done that in numerous, particularly on our side, you know, we have leaks. We've found a lot of those, as you say, without having to dig up as much pavement as we used to have to do in the old years before we used this technology. We've also got a drone that has infrared technology that can find the differential between soil temperature and water that's leaking out, so it shows up as a different color to help pinpoint a leak, too. So we're using, we're very much in tune with technology. And we've got a couple of guys on our team that are participating in a tag group, which is a technology-based group that other utilities participate in, where these, where this organization goes around the world and looks for new technologies and brings them back. And then this tag team will Q and A them and try to hone that technology to something that can come into the marketplace. So we are involved in implementation of new technology. Of course, some of it can be very expensive, so we try to right-size our technology to meet our needs and not overburden our customers with extreme costs.
Well, I have a request. I don't know where the city, Deputy Cityman, if you can write this request down. I have a request for the Water Works to come back and give us a presentation on that equipment so that the citizens understand. Because as an ordinary person, I mean, I'm not rich, every penny counts, and I hear award-winning and I see all this, really, I understand it, but if I wasn't in this position, it would have meant nothing to me. It would be like, they're just raising the money because they want to pay increase. That's what my brain would be if I wasn't in this position and understand this. So it's important for the customer and our citizens to understand what they're getting for their money. If there are programs, not just for the low incomes, but like you're saying now, that we do have this in place, we would tell them of the leaks, so that the citizens know and feel like, okay, my money is well-being spent because it's protecting me not only by what I consume, but what I pay, you know, for my home. So I'm requesting that maybe within a month or something.
And I will take that back to our communications department. That's a good point. I mean, we are kind of in the weeds and using this stuff, and we can better communicate it to our customers, so they certainly can better appreciate the service and the work they're getting.
And my reason I wanted to be a presentation in council, it could be in a work session, it could be, is because lots of citizens watch the council now. It used to be where you didn't, but now people are more engaged, especially the way the economy is. And our constituents might call us and tell us, well, then we'll be educated enough to say, this program exists at the Water Works that can help you with that leakage or with that problem. So that's my request.
Right. And we embrace a lot of technology. We will try to not overwhelm city council when we come back. We'll try to hit the points we think our customer would appreciate.
Well, that's all I want. Like you said, you stood there today and said you have a way to tell where the leak is. Well, that's what I want you to bring back. I don't want every technology you do. I want you to think, if a person had a leak in their home, how do we go out there and show them exactly where that leak is before anything has to be torn up? That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking the whole crew. I'm just asking, I'm a citizen, I have a leak, it's not my toilet. What are you going to do to help me locate that where I don't have to tear up all the concrete in my house or walls in my home?
Generally, you know, we've kind of gone above and beyond what we historically have done, because typically, what's on the customer side of the meter has been the customer and their plumber's responsibility. But with this technology, we will step over there and help them find their problem. We don't fix their problem, they'd have to contact a plumber. But we have kind of gone more engaged with the customer on their side of the meter.
And that's the only thing I want. I don't need the whole wide world. I just need that. I called you and I tell you I have a problem, you'll come here and you'll show me what you're going to do to help me resolve that problem. Thank you. And that's for our constituents, so they know where their money is going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. Again, my name is Joe Crea. I'm a vice president with RevTelus. I've worked there for over 14 years now. As Steve mentioned, I've worked with Columbus Water Works for, I think, over 12 years. Been involved in the financial planning and rate aspects. Our organization, we do work with around 600 municipal utilities in government in any given year, working on over 1,000 projects, very similar to the work we do here with Columbus Water Works. One of the benefits of that, of the values I believe that that brings, is some perspective in terms of benchmarks and comparisons for how the unique situations and circumstances for all of our clients compare to those of their peers. And what you're looking at here on the screen is one of those comparisons that we use, again, just to gauge some information. And this is a comparison of a typical water and sewer customer bill for a residential customer that uses 3,750 gallons per month, which is a fairly typical volume of consumption. And this information is called from those 600 utilities that we work with on an annual basis. And so the national average and the regional average for the southeast kind of portion of the U.S., you can see, is around $66 per month. Currently, the Columbus Water Works, a customer receives a bill that's just under $45 per month, so about a $20 per month savings relative to those regional and national averages. What this stems from is that, again, we collect data and we've worked with utilities over a long period of time. Over the last two decades, the average national increase in water and sewer rates per year is 5%. Columbus Water Works' average over that time is closer to 4%. Oftentimes, it's been less than the 4% mark. And it may not seem like a big difference, but when you kind of add that up over that long period of time, it does manifest into the real savings that you're seeing there on the screen. For 2022, Columbus Water Works has proposed a 3.75% rate increase that allows them to continue to provide safe, reliable drinking water to the community. This would be effective on bills rendered after January 1st. And we can see there, the increase that most customers would see is less than $1.90 per month. We'll explore that a little more on this following slide as well. So on the right side of the graph, that is a typical bill for a six CCF customer, which is 4,500 gallons per month. Nearly 70% of all residential bills are for that volume or less, and that would, those customers would receive an increase of $1.89 under this proposed rate increase. For customers at that aforementioned 3,750 gallons per month, the $45 bill, $44.98, increases by $1.68 to $46.67. So still, you know, $20 about below the regional and national averages with the increase. And that would kind of encompass over half of the customers in the community. And thinking about some comparisons on a more local level, we've long known that Atlanta kind of holds the standard for most expensive service in the state. But relative to some of our more similar-sized peers, Columbus Water Works continues to provide very competitive water and sewer service, again, very well, very much below the regional benchmarks. And Alex will talk more about this, but Columbus Water Works also offers a low-income credit program for qualifying customers that offers an $8.50 reduction on a bill, which brings that typical monthly bill down to just under $34 per month, which is, again, competitive with all of the communities you see there on the screen, as well as with Phoenix City. Now, I'll pass it to Alex and let her talk more about the customer assistance options.
Good morning, Mayor Henderson and council members. Thank you for letting us be here today. My name is Alex Hinton, and I have the pleasure of serving with the Columbus Water Works team and then also serving our ratepayers. Today, I'd like to share some information on our customer assistance options that we offer at Columbus Water Works. As Joe mentioned, we have the existing low-income credit program that offers an $8.50 monthly credit. We also have payment plans that are available. In addition, we have a third option that we're excited about, that we like to talk about today, too, that we're working on as well. A little bit about the low-income credit program. This is, the customers may apply through the Columbus, for the Columbus Water Works Low Income Credit Program by contacting Citizen Service or 311. And you can also reference our website for further details as well to see if you qualify for this program. We also here at Columbus Water Works understand that situations can happen to make on-time payments difficult for your bill. If this is the case, you can request payment arrangements. You can do this by calling our customer service representatives or by also emailing us at During COVID, we've also extended the payment arrangements and worked with our customers individually to ensure if they are making those payments, that, you know, we are keeping the water on. An additional program we're going to talk a little bit more about is the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. And this program is currently under review by staff. The Low Income Household Water Assistance Program, or otherwise known as LIWAT, provides funds to assist low-income households with water and wastewater. The LIWAT program provides grants to states as a temporary emergency program. The state funds will be distributed through community partners. Our community partner at Columbus Water Works is Enrichment Services Program. We are currently been in progress with Enrichment Services Program to review the program and get that implemented. We're in the final works of having our attorney review it. It is in agreement with the state. And then again, we work with ESP where they qualify the individuals for this program. Currently, this program will allow $200 to $300 per year based on eligibility of the program, and details of this are forthcoming. As you can see, this is the fiscal year 2022 Low Income Household Water Assistance Program eligibility guidelines, and it's based off of household size and income. So a typical household size of four with income of up to $33,091 can receive a $300 annual benefit. That same household size of four, a little over that $33,092 to $50,911, is going to be eligible for a $200 benefit. Again, this program has been approved by the state. Payments will flow actually to the utility providers, not the individuals. And so we're currently in the process of finalizing the agreement, our agreement with the state, to ensure that we can meet all of the requirements with the state. There's a lot of reporting and things like that that we're going to have to ensure that we can provide. So, but again, but we've been working hard to make sure that our system can provide that information, and then there's not any sort of hiccups on that. We can go ahead and get that signed, hopefully, and start working with ESP to roll that piece out. Overall, the proposed changes for our water bill ahead is the proposed 3.75 rate increase to continue to provide safe and reliable drinking water. As we talked about, this will impact, have about a $1.90 impact for almost 70% of our customers. And then we're excited about the LIWAT program in hopes that to roll that out, like I said, by the end of the year, beginning of next year with ESP. We've also provided a one-page summary that you'll find along with your presentation. This right here, it's front and back. This is just an increased efforts of communication for Columbus Water Works. We are in hopes this will provide an easy reference if your constituents have questions. This summary information is also available on our website if you need to reference them as well. So certainly like to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions or comments, we'd be happy to answer them as well.
Yes, Counselor Woodson?
Thank you so much for that presentation. Truly appreciate it. I have a question for you. The customer assistant option, the existing Low Income Credit Program, it's 850 monthly. Is that the cost right now, or is that with the increase?
We increased that, that year from 750 to 850. So it's currently 850 right now, a reduction of 850 on your water bill.
All righty. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, Alex? Counselor Davis?
I have a question for Mr. Davis. It's along the lines of what Counselor Tucker was talking about a minute ago. If the Water Works is able to, I was reading through some of your documents about not really acquiring a lot of funds from outside sources, whether it's federal government or state. But if the Water Works is able to secure some of that funding coming from Washington, do you plan to credit back the citizens in the amount?
We would roll that into our financial model in what I think the, I would forecast that the impact would be that our rate increases would be much smaller going forward, because we wouldn't need to be having to debt finance or pay for more capital investment going forward. That would...
So you would offset any future increases to the system?
That would be my expectation, but certainly we could look at, you know, that's the reason why we have this annual financial rolling analysis, is to kind of look at our cost impacts. And with having kind of a windfall like that, you know, what we might, we do with that to benefit our customers. So kind of all options would be discussed if and when we get that through our next rate analysis.
Well, when it comes to customer service, I think that would be a great statement. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? Well, Steve, well, yes, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. While you're here, I just wanted to ask about, or bring to your attention, as a property manager, I have a lot of tenants that will, you know, get new service. And I consistently get, you know, concerns from them that it's difficult, it's cumbersome, it's, and so... It's cumbersome, it's, and so I just think that maybe you guys could look into that.
Is, is that in terms of getting in contact with our customer service reps, or we're...
It's kind of over, I, I get them talking about all different levels of it, the billing, the getting in contact. It's just, it's kind of all over the board, and so...
Could I have, could, would you mind if I had our customer service vice president call you about specifics so that we can respond, you know, specifically? I mean, it may not be appropriate in this forum to kind of get into the weeds, but we certainly would like to follow up and try to improve that.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, but if he wants to call me, that would be fine.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tucker.
This question is for Alex. In reference to the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program that's approved by the state, what's the approximate date that you think this program will actually be available here local, locally?
I mean, I hate to give a definitive date, because like I said, we are working with our attorney to try to finalize the agreement, as well as ESP, but I mean, the hopes is, honestly, ESP had wanted to go ahead and get it started when they do their lie-heap interviews as well, which already has started, but we've got to make sure, I think, from the state perspective, they needed the participation of the utility providers. Again, this is not being paid to the individuals who's paying the bills, it's going straight to the utility providers, and so I think, you know, it was quick to roll out, so I think the utility providers have to make sure that they can be in compliance with what they're signing, which is kind of what's, you know, we had to make sure, too, because there is a lot of reports and things like that that we have to provide to the state, and so we had to make accommodations in our billing system to make sure that we could identify those payments and make sure that we could do the reporting. So we've had to make some changes to our system, which, you know, I mean, it didn't take forever, but, you know, it took a little bit of time and effort and money to make those changes, and so we have made those changes. I would, I mean, I would really hope by the end of the year would be my expectation.
Thank you, Councilor. Yeah, and I think, I think the Water Works should be applauded for pursuing that, because that's a great program. It's going to benefit a lot of our citizens. Well, don't, don't appear to be any other questions. Steve, Alex, Joe, thank y'all for the presentation, and I'm sure if there are any questions down the road, they will not hesitate to reach out to you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the city attorney's agenda. Ms. Fay.
Okay. Thank you again, Mayor. The first item up is the zoning matter ready for a vote, 1417th Street, the Bussi petition, ready for action.
All right, there's a motion, a second for approval. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none. Bruce, please queue it, and councillors, you can register your votes. All right? It's approved?
That passes. Number two is the ordinance amending the fines imposed for various building code violations. It's ready for adoption.
Motion approved from Councilor Woodson, and I think I heard Councilor House on the second. Is there any discussion regarding this motion? Hearing none, we'll ask it to be queued up, and you can register your votes.
All right. Mr. Pruitt is here in the back. That has passed. Item three is a first reading zoning hearing today. It's a public hearing. We're going to hear from the applicant first. We've got, this is 2019 Warm Springs Road, wants to go from neighborhood commercial to general commercial. Planning Advisory Commission recommended denial, planning department conditional approval, so you've got a split recommendation. Mr. Gibson is here for the petitioner. They've got a presentation, and then we'll hear from anybody opposed or other issues. Give them your name and address, please, for the record there, Mr. Gibson.
Yes, sir. My name's Austin Gibson. I'm a lawyer at Page Scranton, and my address is 6166 Patriot Court here in Columbus, Georgia. And I'm here today on behalf of Burton Investments LLC. They are the owner of the property located at 2019 Warm Springs Road, and that property is actually under contract to be sold to a local developer, Mr. Darren Moody. And the proposed use for that project and the proposed development would be a gas station, well, a convenience store with gas sales, really. And the, the engineers and architects on the project are Moon and Meeks did all the engineering work, and then Sudhir Patel, a local architect, did all the architectural And so as you can see, the property we're talking about is, is on Warm Springs Road, heading towards the downtown area, almost directly across from the Magnolia Manor Nursing Facility. And the property's 088 acres, so a little less than an acre there, and it's currently vacant, and has always been vacant, and is, the property's located in Councilor Garrett's So the proposed zoning from neighborhood commercial to general commercial, we think is consistent with, with the area, as well as with the, you know, the future planning for that area. Although the property's currently neighborhood commercial, and a majority of the, of the parcels around that property are neighborhood commercial, those properties were formerly, under the former zoning ordinance, they were all C2, and of course, when the, when the zoning ordinance was changed back in 2005, C2, for the most part, became neighborhood commercial. And, you know, under the C2 zoning, this property would have properly been used as a gas station, and so a lot of the, a lot of the properties that are currently NC around this property are all, are all parcels that may be, you know, operating under a general commercial use. For example, two doors down to the, you know, in this picture to the right, you can see that there's a small building where the streets come into a point, and that, that formerly was a gas station for several years, and it's, it's vacant now, it's no longer in business, but that, that property was operated under the NC zoning, only because it, it was grandfathered in when the zoning ordinance changed back in 2005. And so following, following the completion of Warm Springs Road, the expansion project by DOT, it's, you know, it's now a four-lane major highway, and the idea being that it's, it's a new artery into the downtown area, and so it's, it's a heavily trafficked area. And, you know, this project would benefit the area because based, based on my, my review of, you know, maps and driving up and down Warm Springs Road, I, I don't believe there's a gas station between, there's a gas station at Piedmont Hospital, and then there's not another one until where, you know, Warm Springs Road slash Chencham Boulevard intersects with Reese Road. So that, that's about a four-mile, four-mile corridor of Warm Springs Road that doesn't have a gas station currently. And so as I mentioned, the proposed development is, is for a convenience store with gas sales, and this is our site plan here, and as you can see, the proposed building is back there in the back right corner, and then there'd be a small fuel canopy with four, with four fuel pumps up in the front there. And as you can see, the properties on either side are currently zone neighborhood commercial, and then the property behind is a residential property. And so in light of the residential property, we've, we've already agreed to build, build a privacy fence, include shrubbery, and push that all back 20 feet into our property line to try to give that residential property owner a buffer there. As far as any traffic concerns, we don't believe there's going to be any major traffic impact based on this development. Really, really, this, this development would benefit the traffic that's already on Warm Springs Road, because it would give folks traveling downtown in the mornings kind of an easy pull-in, get gas, and then pull right back out. And so I don't, I don't believe there's going to be any major traffic impact, but I, I do believe that it would, you know, the traffic that's already on Warm Springs Road, it would benefit that. As far as public facilities go, there's no, there's no adverse or material impact on public facilities already operating in the area, so that, that shouldn't be a concern. And then as far as economic impact, you know, in the, in the development of the project, there'd be several jobs created and, you know, purchases made for construction materials and things like that. And then as well, at project completion, there'd be a few permanent positions, you know, paying, paying a fair salary for those jobs, as well as sales tax revenue from folks making gas purchases and making purchases at the convenience store itself. And so this is just an architectural rendering of the project. This, as you can see, it's, it's got a, it's got a nice brick facade, and so it is going to be, it's going to be a nice upscale gas station if it does end up getting built. And so the project, as mentioned, was, the approval was not recommended by PAC, but it was, we did get a conditional approval from the planning department, and up on the screen, we've got three conditions that we're all agreeable with, the first being hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and then the second being no garbage pickup or deliveries between the hours of 7:00 AM or, or, excuse me, before 7:00 AM or after 5:00 PM. And then finally, that the fuel trucks that would be used on the property would not exceed 33 feet. And so we know, we're aware indirectly that there is, there have been some concerns about whether or not the property's large enough to support fuel trucks and things like that. And so we had our engineers prepare a, you know, they'd already prepared a truck turnaround study, but they, they did so again, and tried to, you know, provide some color and things to make it a little bit more clear here. And so what we have here is, this is a truck's turnaround, truck turnaround study showing the entrance and then the exit of a truck from the property, and note that the, the dimensions are up in the top, but this is for a full-size fuel truck, and the fuel trucks that we would agree to include in the, that we would use exclusively would be 33 feet or smaller. So as you can see, engineering-wise, it, a full-size fuel truck could get into the property and back out relatively easily, but with, with, cutting it down to 33 feet, it shouldn't be an issue. And, you know, if there are any further questions about fuel, the fuel trucks and turnaround and things like that, we do have Moon Meeks here with us today, Ryan Davis, and so he'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have on that point. But just in summary, we believe that this rezoning request and the application before you today is, is consistent with the direction that Warm Springs Road is going, and, you know, we've taken steps and we're accepting conditions requested by the planning department to try to make any impact of this project as minimal as possible. And we, you know, we've reached out to several different, you know, individuals and businesses in the area, and we've garnered some support from, you know, several folks have written in letters in support of the project, including, including the, there's a beauty supply store, you know, if you're face, if you're facing our subject property, it's across the street and down to the left a little bit, kind of towards Hilton Avenue, and they've written a letter in support of the project. And then as well as, we've reached out with Magnolia Manor, which is directly across the street, and, you know, if there is any impact, they'd certainly be one of the ones to feel it. And through conversations with their, with their chief executive officer, they, they've said they don't, they don't have any opposition to the rezoning. You know, they, he indicated that, you know, based on it being a four-lane highway, he, you know, he understood that things, you know, were going to be changing and developing in that area, and so they, they did not have any opposition to, to the rezoning. And then finally, I'd ask that you also consider the impact that the denial of this rezoning would have on Burton Investments LLC. Burton Investments is owned by David Humphries, who's here with us today, and he, he inherited this property, and he's, you know, on and on over the last several years, he's been trying to sell the property, or, you know, get it developed in some other way, and he hasn't had any luck doing that, because, you know, any potential developer has always wanted to get that GC zoning designation, and so, you know, I, I would anticipate that, you know, if the property couldn't be rezoned, then the property will probably just continue to be vacant and, you know, not put to any use, which doesn't necessarily benefit anyone. And so as I mentioned, we've got several folks here with us today, David Humphries, who's the owner of the property, Mr. Moody, who is the architect on the, or, excuse me, who is the developer on the project, and then Ryan Davis from Moon Meeks is here as well. So if you have any questions, I'd, I'd hope between all of us, we could answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Councilor Walcott?
Austin, the, the only complaints I've received have been from adjacent property owners. Is there something that y'all could put in your conditions to protect their security and protect them from, you know, people who sometimes will hang out at gas stations and impact property values, that kind of thing? Could y'all, I know we had a gas station that did not pass, but part of the conditions was to have, basically, the police would have access to the camera system, and I know y'all already have limited hours, but is that something y'all could put in your conditions that, you know, because this would come back in two weeks, that that would be addressed, that y'all would work with Columbus, Columbus Police, and maybe some sort of security concerns with the property owners that are adjacent to it?
Yeah, I think we're definitely open to any of those type of concerns. I'd have to defer to Mr. Moody, just to make sure, but, but, you're welcome to come up. So the, the question was whether or not we'd be okay with allowing the City of Columbus Police Department to have access to our cameras to help monitor and make sure there's no...
And have cameras all around the property, so that it doesn't become a sight for vagrants?
Anytime.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'd be hap, we'd be happy to do that, as well as any other, you know, conditions to address those safety concerns.
Well, if, if necessary, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to add the, the presence of, of cameras and, and access to CPD as a condition.
Okay. We'll take that as a motion, seconded by the mayor pro tem, so the amendment is to require cameras be placed on the premises and have that, have the CPD and our law enforcement have access to that footage. All right, motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. That'll be added as a condition.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any more. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If there are no other questions around the table, Mayor, we'll hear from anybody opposed to the petition. Okay, Mr. Calhoun, come on up, give your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, everybody, and happy Tuesday. Thank you for allowing me to come this morning. Bobby Rowe established Rowe Realty Company in the mid-'50s. He had started in real estate with my dad, and Bobby passed away in the fall of 2013. And I, I served as an interim broker for several months, and it became obvious that something permanent, more permanent needed to happen, and so I purchased the business from Mrs. Rowe. I believe, you might have put my glasses on. I believe that a seastore next to my business will be detrimental. And at the PAC meeting, all of this was discussed, the hours of operation were agreed to, 6:00 to 11:00, and so a motion, a motion was made at the PAC meeting to approve it on that There were two votes for it and six votes against it, and those were citizens just, just like us. If I could, I would like to pass out, I don't know what the procedure is here, but pass out some pictures of the businesses along this stretch of road. Thank you. Hey, hey, you want to? I need, I need, I need it to go there. Well, anyway, everybody's got these pictures, and I've got a, I'm not going to belabor the point, but that, that's a picture, the first picture is a picture of Rowe Realty Company. Second picture is across the street of the nursing home. The next picture is a picture of Dr. O's practice, and he has a Christian medical practice. And if you don't think it's a Christian medical practice, go in there about 9:30 on just about any morning, and his patients are lined up, and they hear a Christian message, and I'm not talking about two seconds either, he preaches. So, and he's here, and he will follow me, and he, he is opposed to this rezoning, too. Next picture... Next picture, just, I'm just going on down, the, my main point is, is that regardless of what any long-range plans say about this stretch of roads, these are the businesses and the offices that are in, in this stretch. And I don't believe that a C-store is, is in keeping with them. Also, one of the pictures is of, is cardiology, and, and Dr. Fred Burdette told me last night he was gonna send me an email, he's opposed to it. There's one picture that I would like for you to call to your attention, if you don't There's a picture from the top of the, if you're coming on, on Warm Springs Road west, that's the picture. There you go. You got 'em. So, you're coming west, you don't know Columbus that great, or maybe you, maybe you just, you come across this hill, and you can see the slope of the, of, of, of the road. You've got six hundred feet to this property on, on your left. You're in the right lane. That's, that's an accident fixing to happen. If you're going forty miles an hour, six hundred feet, I'm, I didn't go to Georgia Tech, but I don't, but it, you get there pretty quick. And so, there is a turn lane there, but I believe that it's a, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. The property itself has a hundred and fifty-one feet of frontage. You've got one curb cut, and it's immediately coming west when you come to the property. So, I, I believe it is a traffic hazard. But I'd like to, I'm, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot more time, I promise. But I would like to pass out one other thing, if I could, but, but I wanna read the letter, because I've been, I was asked to read this letter, and the letter writer is Melissa Rowland, Administrator of Magnolia Manor Assisted Living. My name is Melissa Rowland, and I am the Administrator of Magnolia Manor Assisted Living. I have been in healthcare for over thirty years. I would like to express my concerns with the zoning of the property across the street from our senior living community to a convenience store. We currently have serious issues with vagrants and unsavory people in the area that already threaten the safety of our vulnerable population. We have had to call the police on several occasions for people roaming onto our property and even sleeping on our doorsteps. I am concerned that a convenience store will only bring more issues to this area. The idea of a senior citizen attempting to cross a busy street when they see the temptation of a convenience store within walking distance is unsafe. I have personally seen the negative effects of such a store within walking distance of other nursing homes in the Columbus area. This area of town needs to be revitalized, and not a place for more alcohol and tobacco sale shops. Bringing that traffic would only lead to more crime and a reason for people to loiter in the area. Please accept my letter as an expression of my opposition to the zoning of a convenience store in the vacant lot across the street from our se, senior citizens. Sincerely, Melissa Rowland, Administrator, Magnolia Manor Assisted Living.
Mr. Calhoun, excuse me, Counselor Walker, did you have-
I, Mr. Calhoun, I mean, I hate to do this, but Mark Todd, my wife was, as y'all know, was the former administrator over there, and Mark Todd, the CEO, directly reached out to me and said she had no authority to write that letter. And I did talk to, she did talk to former employees, and the other gas station was in operation before, and they used to always walk to get breakfast, but they've always got issues with memory care folks, but they keep them on lockdown. And then the independent living, of course, can go anywhere they want, they already walked down to CVS. So, I did wanna make sure, because the email was sent directly to me from Mark Todd, that is known, that he said there was no implicit or implied authority for her to express that opinion, 'cause they already had the gas station before they got shut down.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna finish up by saying that if this zoning request is denied, Mr. Humphries will still own his property, and there are a lot of uses within neighborhood commercial that are very viable options. So, it's, but thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun.
Dr. O, who owns the property on the other side, would like to-
Doctor, give him your name and address, please, for the record.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Dr. Anthony Alafitji. I'm the owner of the Christian Medical Association that is next to this property. And like the gentleman I've said clearly, I mean, when you even look at the plan, there's only one inlet to the, presume the gas station. And that inlet, we have one inlet and outlet. You know, that is a, just imagine a truck coming in to get a gas, or even their tanker coming in, it's gonna be a mess in that place. My practice, you know, we don't allow people to smoke in the vicinity. Most of the patients, when they're waiting, they go to the front of that place. So now, it's gonna be a convenient place for them to go to that gas station with, what I call it, and it's gonna be, what I call a fire hazard, and the proximity of the people, I mean, some people are waiting, children are there, moving around all there, with the volume of traffic that that place will invite. We are talking of it now, and we have to project about the, about the growth of that place. And then having one gas station with only one inlet and outlet, and with, even the previous gas station that was next to it had problems, and it had roads on both sides. So this one is gonna be enclosed between two residential properties, or two business properties, and it's so small, and now, we'll be having all this volume coming in and out. I think it's gonna be, not only what I call accident hazard, it's just a potential time bomb, if it's allowed to grow.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, I think the doctor makes a valid point.
Yes, Ms. Newman, this is, you're dealing with a four-lane highway that's got a universal turning lane that looks like in the middle. How is engineering gonna deal with this kinda potential hazard of people getting in and out from all directions?
We'll look at that when they submit their site plan. We'll look at site distances and turning radiuses and potential for XL, Dcel lanes. That's all part of the site development plan review, the number of access points-
I understand that. I know you'll look at it, but I'm asking you a direct question. How do you plan on dealing with this type of hazard?
Well, if I haven't seen the site plan-
Of course, we will be, as she said, off the cuff, standing here before you today, we are not going to give you a direct answer. We need to look at what they submit and assess it and go through our normal process. But what we can assure you of is that our staff always do the due diligence, they do the review, and there are written responses to the plans that are submitted. And we may say something here today that might change, and so until we get that, she can't give you the details of the response, standing right there today.
Well, Ms. City Manager, let's talk about this a minute. I'm a little, there's a request before us to reprove, to approve a rezoning-
Sure.
-for a gas station.
Yes.
And we've got a site plan here on a very small parcel of property, and we're being asked to make a decision. The question I'm asking is a very valid question, and I need help and assistance in understanding how that aspect of this is gonna work. That may be the deciding factor in my vote. But I'm not gonna sit here and approve a matter that I have no idea of how this is gonna be handled. Now, we've dealt with these matters in the past. Based on that, how engineering deals with these kinda things, I need some help in understanding how we plan on dealing with this, because this site plan doesn't look like, it, it looks to me as exactly what the doctor's stating, it's gonna create a tremendous traffic hazard.
Well, the engineer can provide you some general information on how we will deal with it, but I'm saying to you, until they get a set of plans that comes across their desk, and what you may see in what you, you're reviewing today may not be what comes across their desk, or it may get to them, and they say, "Well, no, you can't do it this way, and the only way we're going to approve it is that it's done this way."
Correct.
That happens. They cannot do that here today, and so-
This is just a concept.
Yeah, that's a concept. They can give you some general feedback, but they are the professional engineering team, and they are going to meet all federal, state, and local requirements, and they are going to protect the citizen and those adjacent businesses when it comes across their desk. That we can assure you of.
Well, these plans are usually submitted. Are they submitted to our engineering, to planning and so forth? Aren't they looked at before they get to the PAC?
Well, after it goes through this process, they've got concept. When it goes to them, it is signed off, once submitted by engineers, architects, and all that, and that's when they go through their detailed process. So if you want her to give you some general, here's how we would normally, certainly she can do that, but once it's aired on TV, that's, it may not be when it comes across their desk.
Well, that would help. That would help. That's, that's a lot better than we'll look at it.
Yeah. Well, you want to give them some generalities about how you might look at this-
Sure.
-when it comes across your desk, or the desk of the other engineers in your department.
Sure. When we look at it, we will look how it fits into the overall traffic-
Move your mask for a second.
I'm sorry. We'll look at how it fits into the overall traffic pattern for the corridor, and things that may or may not happen, depending on site distances, which I think is partially what you're concerned about. There is an advantage to having a multi-lane road, because you do have other lanes for traffic to move in and out of, and not interrupt the, the flow of traffic, the general flow of traffic. So depending on site distances, we have had cases to where we restrict to right-in, right-out, where they can't cross a lane of traffic or the, the, into the other direction. Sometime, we restrict left-turn lane, but you do have a center-left turn lane in place on this drawing, so that might be allowed. It could change the size of the, the driveway, it could change the radius. It, like I said, it could require Dcel lanes or XL lanes. It all depends on the engineer drawing and the elevations and how it fits into the area and what's going on around it.
How much road frontage are we dealing with here?
Like you said, a hundred and fifty-one feet, is that what they said? Anything else, Counselor?
Well, look, as a developer, I mean, I'm just seeing a major challenge here, and I'm not getting any help on this, understanding how, how the traffic is gonna flow. Normally, we, you know, we had one of these not long ago over on, in Columbus Park Cross, Crossing, and a traffic light had to go in. I, I don't see that happening here, but I do see how all these, the alignment of the adjacent properties and their, their entrances and exits. You know, even I'm having a hard time figuring this one out. But anyway, it, it would help if we had a better understanding of that, since this is such a, such a small lot. Normally, having, if you had two entrances and exits, which I don't see it here, that would be a different story, but it just looks like confusion to me from that standpoint. But anyway, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Well, and Mayor, let me just be clear. If, if you want that level of detail from the engineer, then the process needs to change. The process needs to be that it goes to PAC, and before it comes here, you require their engineer, which they're gonna pay out money for, to draft more detailed drawings and plans that they submit to our engineer, engineering department, and let them review them and make all of their comments, and then it comes to you. And, and that's changing the entire process.
Well, and that may be the thing to do, Ms. City Manager, because when you're dealing with these type of parcels-
Yeah.
-that's very appropriate. If we don't have a policy in place, when you get these type of requests, maybe that should be a priority to understand that, and PAC should evaluate that and, and deliberate on that as well. But, you know, I'm not getting an answer on it today, and it just is very confusing.
Well, and, and, and you're gonna get a general review from the engineer, and of course, I have no problem with the process changing, but the developer, the builders, might have a problem with that changing, because they're spending money on the front end before it gets to PAC, and then it gets, I mean, before it gets to you, gets to you, and you don't approve it, well, they spent all that money. And so, I, you know, but, but the one thing that, the assurance that you have as the elected officials is, if you approve a rezoning or a, for something such as this, when it gets to our engineering department and for plan review, I know that you've heard builders and others complain about the length of time, and they make notes, and they send it back to them, and they want them to do more work, and then a guy has to come back for two or three reviews. That's because they gotta get it right. And that's because they're doing their job, the engineers, once it gets to them. And builders and developers sometimes don't like it, and I know you hear from them, 'cause I do. And so, that's just the process.
Well, and I think one of the, one of the challenges is this is sort of new frontier, because it's now, the entire, entire base of that road has changed, 'cause now it's four-lane, so it's gonna lend itself to more commercial development. And this is one of the first commercially zoned properties along that corridor, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Hang on. Trying to find you. There we go.
You referring to a GC zone property?
Yes, GC.
Yes, sir. The only thing that we have zoned GC since the UDO came into effect in two thousand and five is the old grocery store there behind CVS, which is now maybe the beauty shop.
Yep.
Because it was over fifteen thousand square feet, and NC limits you to five thousand square feet per use.
Well, and I guess my point is, is that if, if we did determine, and from an engineering standpoint, that it could not be configured in a way that would be practical and/or safe, that we'd have a general commercially zoned property that can't be used for its original intent, but now it opens up a whole list of other uses.
And, and Ms. Mayor, again, if, if they are, once, if it's approved here, if, you know, to satisfy our engineering department, they may have to spend on a lot more money to get it right. And if they can't spend that money to get it right, or are not willing to, because we're not going to sign off on the plan and, and our inspections- not going to sign off on the plan, and our inspections and codes are not going to allow it to proceed forward, then it would be GC and could be used for something else, but it would not be used for this because they can't measure up to what the Engineering Department is requiring.
That's sort of the point. I think it could end up somewhere else. Got a few other counselors that are in queue. Counselor Garrett?
I'm going to add another condition based on Dr. O's concerns, if I can get a second. I'd like to make a motion to require approval as part of the conditions by traffic engineering of any ingress and egress of any final plans they present. And that will obviously... We know this road, being four-lane, is most likely going to be all GC, but that will give engineering the final word on whether or not it's approved based on the traffic studies, and they may need more time for that. But the property does make sense GC, but whether or not it can function as a gas station, that'll be the question. That way, they'll have to get approval of ingress and egress by traffic engineering.
When we review a plan, we look at the use, not the zoning. So it would be based on what's the proposed use of the property.
Sure.
So does that safeguard already exist? Or are we putting an unnecessary layer on there?
It's pretty much in our regulations in the UDO.
It's the city attorney.
Yeah, I mean, these are commonly added. We could put in ingress and egress, it'll be limited to a plan specified by the city engineer.
There's a motion from Counselor Garrett and a second from Counselor Woodson. Any discussion regarding the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Yes, Ms. Newman. The... So, Ms. City Manager, it's still confusing, but look, I want... Over the years, we've learned a lot. Veterans Parkway, places like that, other highways. I bet anybody in here can name a particular place in our city that, you know, they sit there and say, "Who in the world approved that driveway? Why is that there?" It was just convoluted, and that's where we're at. We tried to change that. We tried to get more design-oriented and more, you know, development-friendly from a... Whether it's traffic, or usage, or anything like that, it's just better-designed properties in general, better flow of how we utilize these things or these requests. What I... Is this what I hear you saying that today, we're being asked to approve a property for the use of a gas station GC? But does the engineer have the ability, if it goes to her department and she can't make it work, and there's going to be a safety hazard, then she will not approve the use of the request today?
They're not going to get plans approved.
Right.
That's right.
They will not be approved. The plans will not, and they can do whatever in a GC.
I mean, as long as I've been here, I've never known that to happen.
You don't get those calls?
No, I've never known that to happen, but, you know, this... This does concern me, and it would really help to understand the request here a little bit better if we could determine that. Because I'm going to tell you, the DOT is not going to allow you to put in X-cell, D-cell lanes. That's already been developed in that area. That's going to be some major issues. Unless I'm reading that wrong, that road has just been developed and planned out, and I mean, I don't see them approving D-cell and X-cell lanes, or even allowing them at this point. But, I mean, you do... Every property owner is entitled to a curb cut. It's just a matter of the usage here and the constant flow of traffic, which, like I said, I mean, it's very confusing.
Well, I just want to assure those here and those listening that, you know, that when you do your work here, the real work just gets started after that. They've got to go and get plans approved through engineering and be put through the rigor of getting it right. And even when they get those plans approved, then they got to look Ryan Pruitt and his people in their face because they're going to be there day in and day... You know, there's... This is just one step. There's much, much more that follows this.
All right. Counselor Cram?
Thank you. I'm curious, maybe you can answer some of the differences between the zoning of NC neighborhood commercial and general commercial that they're asking for.
NC is a, what we consider a true neighborhood commercial, neighborhood-size commercial development that caters primarily to a neighborhood. No use is permitted to be more than 5,000 square feet, and the uses are limited. For instance, you can have a C-store, and we've got some Lotto stores around town that have no gas. So you can have a C-store with no gas. And then general commercial is our full commercial designation that allows just about everything you can imagine commercially.
And is it of your opinion that because Warm Springs Road has now turned into a major thoroughfare with four lanes and divided center, that it will... That normally that creates an atmosphere that most things will become general commercial along that corridor?
It should not be assumed.
Okay.
Every situation is unique in its own...
So although the road has been created with four lanes and divided center, we... It could still stay pretty much like it is now with neighborhood commercial and smaller businesses along that corridor?
Right.
Okay. And I could see that with... Especially since we have an apartment complex on the end of that block, and then we have the nursing home across the street, we have residential, and then we do have those neighborhoods right behind. So I could see that this would not necessarily become general commercial corridor. That being said, do we have any examples of other gas stations in the city that have 150 road frontage?
Well, and the only one... I'm sure we've got some older ones, but the only one that's been before this council in my 20 years is Weems Road, next to Weems Road Animal Hospital, was an old bread store, and they convert... They tried to convert it to a C-store, got it rezoned. The same conditions applied, but they could not make it physically happen. In the end, the vet bought the property, and now there's a new Weems Road vet on both lots. So that's the only one I can remember. I will also add that this council this year approved a rezoning at the corner of Armor Avenue in Warm Springs Road, where the old church is, that is a two-acre site and is signalized for a C-store gas station.
Again, in my opinion, just trying to visualize this, that makes sense because it's on a corner, you can have an entrance and an exit... You can have two entrances and exits. I just... I can't visualize a gas station on this lot, and I've driven past it several times, and I've driven around town trying to find something that worked, and I haven't been able to find anything. So thank you for that clarification. I mean, maybe...
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe Moon and Meeks could see if they have any examples of them drawing, or how... I mean, they say this will work on... But I just... I don't see it.
Can I say something? Do you want to?
Maybe you can answer my question.
Mayor, we need to get a vote on the condition. If we're still discussing the condition, that's all right.
All right, let's hold on just a second. That's all right. We... Counselors have an opportunity to speak to the motion, and there is a motion on the table. Would you restate the motion, Counselor... The condition?
My motion would be to add to the general commercial rezoning that traffic engineering would have to approve any ingress and egress from the property site and whatever its proposed use may be.
Okay. And that was seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion to the condition being added? Counselor Allen, to the motion?
I just want to make sure... I want to make sure we're clear on, are we adding additional layer? I think the mayor asked it earlier, and I'm not sure if we're doing that. I mean, it's... And my understanding is it's already in the job specs of the Engineering Department to do what you're asking, so I'm not...
Well, again...
I'm not sure we need the motion.
Again, this is commonly added as a condition, that ingress and egress or traffic mechanisms shall be specified by the city engineer. I mean, you don't have to do it, but it's commonly added.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Motion second. Any further discussion? Any further questions?
Can I?
No, sir. Counsel to the motion, not the public. Any further discussion among counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that condition is added. Now, sir.
Okay. Can I ask you, who's the city engineer? Mask.
Say that again.
Who is your city engineer?
Ms...
And do you have a certificate, a degree in engineer? Okay. Well, it seems like Glenn Davis is coming up with some great ideas, and as far as the deceleration and so forth. And when you came up here, you said, "Well, you hadn't looked at the site," and I'm thinking it's totally unprepared, you know, for something like this, especially since it's been out there for two weeks, and everybody should know that. But when I was on Beautiful Vista Road with the Terry's Floors there, adjacent to me was a gas station that sold beer, and when it came late at night, they'd be drinking, breaking bottles on my property, defecating on my property, being a complete nuisance. It was like, God help me. I had to deal with that all the time, Skip, and it was not a fun situation. And I'm also going to ask you, is this considered spot zoning, since you're making an exception to the rule here? Is this... Would you consider spot zoning?
This is not spot zoning because it meets the requirements of the comprehensive plans, future land use plan.
But I do also know this, is that when you make that four lanes, you go on... Make a road right in front of the Terry's Floors now, it may say 40. I'd like to have a policeman sitting there in my lot because they're going 55 and 60 miles an hour. Same way with this four lane, because if I'm not mistaken, where Mr. Rowe used to have his real estate agency is down, it's deflated, can't see it. So if you're going eastbound, you're going to not see it until the last minute, only when you're going westbound. And so the thing is, is that it's going to create some real havoc as far as, you know, traffic in that respect. So that's all I've got to say.
Just to be clear, when we say that the city engineer is not taking a look at it, that's because we have not had any information submitted by the prospective developer. And the reason they don't do that is because it would get very cost prohibitive for any developer trying to move in and trying to do some projects.
But don't you have a zoning board that this has already kind of been...
We do, but you cannot make those kind of determinations without the necessary engineering information coming from the developers. So that's when we say they haven't looked at it. They look at a site plan, and they'll say whether it looks like it's feasible, but they can't make any comment on that until after they get the application.
Well, in the Army, I was always prepared. Whatever was coming my way, you always had to have a contingency where you would be already prepared to give answers.
Yes, but in the Army, too, you don't practice ready-fire-aim, and that's what we would be doing if we were trying to give that. So... But thank you, Ms. Olson.
And Ms. Mayor, if I may...
Yes.
I think you've already responded to Mr. Olson, and I explained our process earlier, and you just reiterated how that process, the process works. Step to the podium for a second. But, you know, to say that our city engineer is not prepared after I've explained the process is insulting. And how long have you been an engineer?
I've been with the city for 32 years, and I've been an engineer since I've been here.
And you've been director for how long?
Probably 30 of that, pretty close.
And this process is not new to you?
It is not.
Okay. And so, you know, I have a lot of respect for our city engineer. You and your department do a great job, and don't let any comments here distract you.
I will not.
So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. O, you are still giving your comments, so we'll invite you back to the podium to finish up, sir.
Oh, thank you so much, sir. Yeah, I just wanted, if they can have a date and just look... Come in the morning and look at the... My parking lot, how people are coming in and out. Even when a car wants to come out and we want to come in, it's a big problem. In fact, because of the wealth... Because of the width of in and out. Not to talk of a gas station that we are going to have a car in and out every minute, you know, because it's... We have a, what do you call it, a bus stop just across. We've got bus stops, there are two lanes, and there's a backlog, especially during the high season, when there's a high traffic. That place will just not be suitable for adding a gas station, you know, within that width of that. That's all I can say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
I hope I'm not speaking out of order, but I know there was a question at one point to maybe ask Moon Meeks a few questions. If that... I know the motion's been passed, but if that's still, you know, something that you guys want some feedback on, he's here and happy to answer any questions.
As I recollect, the question was, was, is that some... Is in a design phase, could that be suitable for what they're talking about with regards to ingress and egress?
Hi, my name's Ryan Davis. I'm a civil engineer, part-owner at Moon Meeks and Associates. So far, this is a conceptual drawing, and like I said, we ran the truck turn simulation. I would like to clarify, the driveway, as it's configured at the moment, is an existing driveway, full-width, commercial-width driveway that was put in place when the road was widened. So presumably, the city and the DOT had some input on where that driveway was configured already. And I would like to also add that, yes, we would coordinate with Donna and her team, and frequently, we submit to them, and they come back and they say, "No, you need to add a D-cell lane." It's part of the process. So to say this is a final design, Donna's absolutely right. This is going to go through the process. And there's a good chance we might end up having to add a taper or a D-cell lane. I don't know yet. We have not... I'll confess, we have not done any traffic trip generation studies on this yet, but that will probably be part of the design process. And I would like to add, given where the driveway is, and again, it's an existing full-width, commercial driveway, if you had to add a deceleration lane, it's in the only place it could be to get one there. And I also just... I know there's been a lot of comment on the width of the property. One of the frequent arguments we have with the Engineering Department is we're usually trying to get more driveways, and the Engineering Department limits us on the number of driveways because every driveway is an opportunity for an accident. So I would also like to add, you could double the width of this property, and I do not think that would make it more likely you would have an additional egress from the site. I can't see any scenario where you'd have more than one, or that's what the Engineering Department would want.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor.
Or Mayor Tim Allen, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, Mayor. I'd have a question for you. Was it... Did you say Ryan Bates?
Ryan Davis. Ryan Davis?
Davis, I'm sorry. Mr. Davis, just for the record, you're an engineer with Moon Meeks, right?
Yes, sir.
And if I understood what you just said, y'all are... You work... The engineering process for your client is in phases.
Yes, sir.
Is that safe to say?
Yes, sir. I mean, generally, it would be cost prohibitive for a developer that's hoping to get a rezoning through to go through a full engineering process on something that may get turned down. So...
That's a good point I wanted to ask about because earlier, someone criticized our partner, Engineering, and I wanted you to help us clarify that your work for your client is not completed yet.
Yes, sir. And I would not expect Donna to have a direct answer to this question.
Okay, so this is a process.
Yes, sir.
And this is one of the early steps in the process, and then the engineering work begins after that on both sides, for the client and for the city. Is that fair to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The other question I had, Mr. Mayor, this area is basically neighborhood commercial now. This would be one of the first general commercial zonings in the area, and it concerns me that we're kind of opening the door here with a convenience store. And while convenience stores serve a good purpose in the city, they do bring some attributes that are not very pleasing to the eye, as some have said earlier here today. So I would like to... So I would like to offer, uh, due to the size of this lot, the congestion of the traffic, there is a chance, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but there's a chance that if this store opens, it may not make it. There's one a couple, a couple of blocks over that it didn't make it. Uh, so I would like to put in some restrictions regarding the, the uses of the property. So under general commercial, there is a wide range of uses. And to protect the businesses around, I appreciate Dr. O coming in, and Mr. Calhoun, and, and others who have expressed, uh, interest in preserving and protecting their property. So I would like to offer an amendment that restricts the use of this property to, uh, a convenience store. And then if, if it doesn't make it, if it's sold again, they would have to come back and try to seek a different use at that point. So I'd make that the form of motion, Mayor.
All right. There's a motion from Mayor Pro Tim to restrict the, limit the use of this particular property that is being petitioned for rezoning to that of a convenience store.
With gas sales?
With gas sales, okay.
With the gas sales or do you own?
With gas sales, yeah, with gas sales. Convenience store with gas sales. And was there a second?
Gas sales.
All right, a second from.
Shall I ask a question?
All right, well, let's get the second in, in order first, and we've got that now to the, to the, um, to the motion, Counselor Crabbe.
Okay. I need clarification on that. Are you limit, so you're saying that we would be rezoning it to general commercial, but they, but out of all the things that they could do with general commercial, those are all taken away?
Right.
And the only thing that they could do would be a gas and, um.
Convenience store with gas sales.
And a convenience store.
Right. And then if they decide they don't want to be in business anymore, the next owner of that property to change the use, they would have to come back to the council and request, uh, for the conditions to be removed.
But it seems to me that that's the one thing that the next door neighbors do not want. So why would we limit it, limit them, you know, they could, we could, I would do it, I recommend the opposite.
Let me offer this.
You know, anything but the convenience store and the gas station.
Let me offer this.
Okay.
Um, the, the protection for the surrounding property owners is no other use there. If, if they decide not to, not to sell the property and somebody else, after we rezonate, somebody else comes in and says, well, C-store's not going to work there, so I think I'll put in a strip joint. So I think I'll put in a massage parlor. So I, any other use that you may think, uh, some people think those that I mentioned are okay, but, uh.
I doubt if the neighbors do.
It's, the, the problem is, is that you open, you leave the door open. If you allow all those uses available open to the public, then Mr. Humphries could go market his property, anybody else he wants to, if this, if this client backs out. And, and we have basically created a, an, a precedent for other general commercial uses in that area. But if the other people interested in buying property in that area know that we're going to limit the uses, then the growth, it's our, up to us control the growth, then the control, growth process works. That's what I was trying to do, is build in protections in case this passes.
Okay, so clarification, since they're coming to us, and this is what their hopes are, is to put a convenience store and, um, a gas station there. And if that doesn't work, then there's, there's nothing else that can go there.
Right. So anybody else that wants to use it for another use has to come back to council and lift that restriction. And then council at that time, whoever's here would make that decision on whether they think that's the best, in the best interests of Columbus and the neighbors and, uh, moving forward.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Counselor Tucker, is this to the motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My, my one issue with the convenience stores and the gas stations is that we have so many that pop up, and unfortunately, a lot of them have, I'm not going to say illegal, um, gambling, but, you know, the little machines in there. But I am going to research and actually go into some that some of my constituents have complained about on Beunice Road. But that is my concern, if we like pigeonhole, um, to the convenience store, how can we deter those type of convenience stores? You know, where they have those, those gaming, I don't know if you know, but a lot of, we have these lottery machines, um, in all of these convenience stores, Lotto marts, Lotto lounges. Um, it's actually becoming a, a problem, um, definitely in District Four, and I'm sure District Three and District Seven, um, and District One. But we, we have a problem with these convenience stores. Um, and honestly, we really need to figure out a way, it's something that I sent to the city attorney back in April about them having those illegal gaming in those, um, convenience stores. So, you know, I don't mind, yeah, it's like a mini casino, um, in these, these convenience stores. It's not even a convenience store no more, it's just people going in there and gambling. So how do we, how do we as counselors, you know, address that? Yes, we want a convenience store, but how can you give me the faith that you're not going to put a lottery, and, and not, not a, a legal lottery, but a illegal gaming systems in these stores? So I, I'm, I'm really, just being honest, I'm against these convenience stores, because we have way too many of them. You see Lotto lounges all throughout, you know, the city. But if it's going to be something productive for, um, those residents in that area, yes, but if it's not, I, I'm, I'm against it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Okay, we, all right.
It's got a substitute motion.
Uh, I'd like to amend, uh, Mayor Pro Tim's motion to include that it could be a convenience store, or medical office, or other office use. So that way, if one of the owners next door wanted to purchase it for medical purposes or for their parking lot or something like that, that would be an option, and that way we would at least have some sort of control over what goes in next door.
Okay. There's a mo.
With gas sales?
Yeah, that's really, that's really a substitute, but it would limit the uses to convenience store with gas sales and medical or other professional office use.
That's a motion to substitute for the Mayor Pro Tim's, uh, motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
All right, there's, there's multiple seconds. I heard the Mayor Pro Tim and Counselor Crabbe. Anybody have any comments to that substitute motion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that, that motion passes. All right, so that, do we need to reject Counselor, or Mayor Pro Tim's, or does that die as a, because of the substitute? Okay.
Or Judy, when you need her.
All right.
Okay, are there any other questions from council, or anybody else in the audience want to be heard? All right, so give your name and address, please, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm, thank you. I'm David Humphries, and, uh, thank you for allowing us to be here. I own the property. Many of you know me. I've been in Columbus since nineteen seventy-one, uh, associated with gen, I was a general contractor for thirty years, owned properties and developed properties. I was a joint venture partner on this project. So my, in the lobby, you'll see my company's name on a plaque. So I'm very familiar with being involved in development of projects and permitting in compliance with regulations, and I support proper engineering, planning, and compliance with all regs. So I have no problem, uh, meeting those requirements, and I think the people that have worked with me will tell you that. I own a piece of property, so here, I, I'm a little confused on, I think the engineer can address this more, but whether it be a convenience store or a Dollar General or a medical facility, the traffic could be the same. And I don't think the delivery requirements, if I had a, a medical building there and I could support a truck, I could, I could have deliveries made across the road, because I don't think anything in the ordinance is, and you can correct me, Ryan, dictate how you receive deliveries. I think the only thing that's stated in the, uh, engineering codes is that your own site can support whatever traffic's coming in, and that's just a general statement. So, but I just wanted to introduce myself. It's the restrictions on the property I would like to, I was excited about the widening of the road. I've owned this piece of property a long time. So I knew there was no way to sell it during the widening, but once the widening's completed, it would open some opportunities for additional development or opportunity to sale or develop. So, uh, I'm hearing a lot of rhetoric, and I'm not sure if it's the traffic that is the issue, or, and I understand the other things, but any opportunity to be able to develop that piece of property, because I know what the, uh, taxes are, and they're being paid, but it's not generating any income. So I think the opportunity to develop it with income and pay tax would be a benefit to the city, as long as all requirements are being met of the city. Is there anything any of you need to ask me?
Yeah, Counselor Davis. Mr. Humphries.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a point one more time. What you are doing, or what your client is doing, is coming here to ask for a request on a very small parcel of land with limited street frontage on a five-lane, just-developed highway with a universal turning lane, with joint adjacent driveways right next to it. You've got a challenge, and I'm trying to figure that out, because I'm not going to prove something if I think there's going to be a traffic hazard. And right now, I would hate to be the police officer coming in there, trying to figure who's coming and going when they hit each other head-on, and who's at fault. Because that looks like a mess to me. But you've got a challenge, and you've got to make the decision if you want to move forward and spend the money, based on what was said here today. But I'm being asked to do that and to protect the citizenry from that standpoint, I'm still confused on that, and I don't have any solid answers. That's all I'm saying.
I understand. And understand this, that piece of property I own before the road was widening, I had no input in where that DOT driveway was placed. We, they submitted plans, I had a chance to review, reviewed with the city, make sure the infrastructure's in place for sewer water, for develop, development use, but I did not dictate where that driveway goes, and I guess the driveway would meet city requirements. If not, the city put it in.
Well, no, here, here's, you, you submitted, your engineer submitted a site plan and just put the driveway where it is. He has no clue right now if he's going to be able to make it work or not. He's already said that. So what you've got is a site plan.
That, I don't think, excuse me.
What you've got is a site plan with the current driveway, but we don't know how that's going to change. I don't know how that's going to change, based on the traffic engineering's input, and based on the DOT, and based on all the analysis that needs to take place, which is a significant amount to see if it's even going to work. So everything we're being, uh, I guess presented with is totally subjective, totally subjective.
Not, not, not totally.
Until we know, and I'm trying to get those missing pieces, and I'm just telling you, I don't have those right now.
I understand.
And it's important to your request.
I understand, but understand, I retain Moon Meeks, they're the professionals.
I've used them before, too.
I understand. So for me to prove, spend the money I've already spent to develop and do the preliminaries, do the preliminary engineering, and ask those questions, will this work? And according to Moon Meeks, who are the engineers, not me, well, they say it will work.
The only thing I have is a site plan.
I understand that.
And he said it, he doesn't know yet, he's got to do the studies and all on it.
I'll let him answer for himself.
From a geometric standpoint, I mean, I'm comfortable to say that it works. If, if we had to modify it with some sort of deceleration lane or a taper, that could come up in the engineering process. But to say it doesn't work, I would not say.
And again, that's subjective, that's your word against our engineer, and.
I, I would say that's exactly what she said.
So there's more information that I need to know about that I, you just told me that nobody, I mean, has all this been deliberated already?
No.
Studies have been done.
Yeah, I think preliminarily, they've looked at it and said that it should work, but, but they can't be, they can't give a final approval on it until they get all the engineering work done. Well, that's, that was the very first question I asked, the very first question. Now everybody's telling me, oh, it'll work. It, it sounds like you already had the information beforehand.
But the opposition was talking, not us.
Did, I.
Poor Donna, I think.
Did you hear the questions I was asking earlier?
Yes, I, yeah, I did.
All I asked is, there's some, some supporting documents that would show me that it's going to work. All I have is a site plan here. I've just got a site plan, a basic site plan.
Well, there's a, there's a truck turning radius study, which, which we heard at, at the pack meeting, that the main concern was the traffic and the tractor trailer truck. That was what we heard, so that's what we addressed. So that, that's why the truck study was done, for the turning radius, and you've got a four-lane road with a turning lane. So getting in and out of the property is an issue, that's with the DOT and the city. That's not.
Okay.
Well, and if, if I may, Mayor, so, yeah, I go back to the process that I've explained. Um, you know, I don't think we've ever received a plan from a builder or developer who didn't think it would work. When they submitted, they submitted because they think it works, until it gets to our engineers, and then they go through our process. So they can say it works all they want. It doesn't work until it gets through our process, from a staff, from a city standpoint. And so I don't think they would submit it if they didn't think it would work.
That's correct.
We got to say it works.
Any, Mr. City Attorney, any further comment?
Um, let's, let's wrap this up. Anybody else in the audience want to be heard that hadn't been heard?
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor.
You have a chance to come back.
That's up to you, Mayor. We normally don't have rebuttal, so.
But, Mr. Calhoun, you go ahead. Make it brief, sir, because.
Sure. Lot of, lot of talk about the traffic, which I think is a problem, and I, this picture, I, I hope you'll look at it, ride the road. But the main thing to me is you're trying to fit a round peg into a square hole. It's a, it's a hundred and fifty-one feet with one entrance. It's, it's just, uh, it, I mean, it's a good piece of property that he has, and I respect the gentleman very much, but it, it's not compatible with the other offices up and down the street. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Mayor, that will, uh, wrap up this public hearing. There've been three conditions added to the ordinance. We're going to bring it back on second reading next week at the meeting scheduled for five thirty P.M. And we'll take it up at that time.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank y'all. Thank you, Mr. Humphries.
All right. Next item on our agenda, Mayor, is an ordinance rezoning property at thirty-two ninety-four Confetti Blush Drive. It's going from a planned mixed-use development to residential estate, residential multifamily, residential office with conditions. So Woodruff Company petitioned.
Counselor Woodson has a question.
City Attorney, um, could you please put on your list of things to do and get back with me and Counselor Tucker at least by Friday? She brought up a point, but there's two issues about convenience stores we need to address. And one is the signage that is being put, and all the, um, gambling machines that are in the, um, convenience stores. We need to get some guidance from you.
Sure.
On how we address that. Um, I know we have busy schedules, we all do, but I need you to contact us no later than Friday with a date for us to meet with you.
Well, we can do that, but let me, let me. Well, we can do that, but let me, let me say this before we meet. The Police Department is real familiar with the gambling device rules, and they, anytime you call them, they'll go check it out if there's a complaint. And, of course, the other thing, the signage would be controlled by building inspectors, so, but we'll be glad to talk about it.
Well, so, in that case, my request to you is you, the Police Department, and somebody from Building and Codes, for us to set a meeting, let us know by Friday what day and what time so we can sit down, because we've been discussing this for over a year or two. I know I mentioned it, and I failed to follow up on it, but it is getting ridiculous. All the signage that convenience stores are using, they do have the gambling machines in it, and when we talked about having a resort casino in Columbus, everybody gets uproar, but yet, we have them already. Matter of fact, a lottery store just opened up on Victory Drive where the old marina was, and it's always packed.
Well, that, that's a mayor and enforcement and police chief issue, but we'll be glad to talk about it.
But they can, they can only enforce what's on the books now, and what's apparently on the books now is not working.
That's state law. State law controls what type of machine you can have. This council doesn't have jurisdiction to control that.
Okay, so that's your job, to meet with us to...
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what we'll do.
To do, talk about it.
Yeah, we'll be glad to...
And we'll pull everybody together, we'll invite you, coordinate calendars, and we'll sit and talk about it.
All right. Can we have something, date by Friday?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to have it by Friday. Keep in mind, Thursday, our staff is, is off, so we'll...
I mean, just a date. It doesn't have to be the meeting right there, because we keep discussing it, but it keeps going around in circles.
Heard loud and clear, we'll get it done.
Okay, thank you. God, I had to be ugly, sorry.
All right. Now, back to the Old Town rezoning requests. So, Woodruff Company is recommended for approval by Planning Advisory Commission and the Planning Department, and we got Mr. Ford here, Ms. Green, and others. Y'all, go ahead, give your name and address for the record.
My name's Genevieve Green. I'm with Woodruff Brokerage Company. My address is 295 Old Bronner's Ferry Road, Hamilton, Georgia.
My name's Chuck Ford. I'm with Paige Scranton, and the attorney for the applicant. My address is 1893 Old River Road, Portson, 31808.
We'll try to be brief. Actually, what I'm asking to do is to take a portion of the property that is currently zoned PMUD, known as Old Town, and rezone that portion that was always intended for residential use to individual residential uses. And the reason for that is we have a lot of confusion. Old Town is the only real PMUD in Columbus, where it has a combination of office, retail, townhomes, apartments, single-family, where it has all the components. When we rezoned a number of years ago, the zoning required certain densities, where we were allowed to do so much commercial, so much office, X number of homes for residential. But there's a lot of confusion about that as to where we would put the commercial. Will, if you'll show that, I think y'all probably have it in your packets. The area that we're rezoning is approximately 145 acres that has always been intended to be residential. The commercial has always been designed to be on the frontage of veterans. But as I said, there's some confusion about we might be able to put, might be able to put commercial back in some of those areas that we intended to do residential, and we're just trying to clear that up. So, there's no confusion with that. When we rezoned, we, the density allowed us 1,147 residential units. We currently have either built or under construction 649 residential units, which, the proposed zoning that you're showing allows for 388 more, which would give us a total of 1,037 residential units, which is actually 110 less units residentially than what was under the PMUD. So, we feel like that, from a traffic standpoint and everything else, it really is, is less cumbersome doing it in this manner, and it just clears up any confusion there might be of where we would put commercial development within Old Town. Hopefully, I haven't confused you, but... The, the area that's being rezoned is, basically, all of that is what we're rezoning. We're not touching what's already been developed or already in place. We're still doing exactly the same amount of green space that was designed in the beginning. We'll have fewer residential units by 110, but the whole concept of Old Town is not changing. We're just really defining what can be in that area that was always designated to be some form of residential use.
Okay. Any questions from counsel? Counselor Crabbe? Hang on, let me get, whoop. Hit your light again. I got you. There we go. I think I shut everybody off.
And so, when you say residential estates, are these gonna be a little bit larger lots?
Ms. Green, I accidentally turned your microphone off. You'd hit that button one more time.
Okay. Actually, the topography will determine that, because we, we've put more smaller lots in and what's been developed already. Probably can't do those small lots again, because we deal with a lot of topography and a lot of rock there. But once we get further back, then we'll be able to determine the size of those lots. But there would be no more than what we're asking for today, probably less.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, Ms. Green, thank you for taking the time to, to meet with me and educate me on this request that you're making. I'm in full agreement with it, and I think it's the right thing, so...
Thank you.
Thanks again for reaching out and taking the time to, to talk to us about it.
Okay. Any further questions from any counsel? Mr. City Attorney, turn your light back on, too. I did a scorched earth approach to accidentally turning these things off.
All right. Does anybody in the audience wanna be heard on this zoning petition at Old Town? Don't see any hands, Mayor, so we will bring this back next week at the 5:30 meeting for a vote.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Okay, next item up is the first reading of an ordinance amending and restating Chapter Five to provide for an animal services division, animal services director, animal enforcement officers...
We got it.
Through a contract with a division of a licensed, private, nonprofit animal shelter. We're gonna call up Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin. I think she has a presentation, and then we'll open it up for any discussion.
Okay, good morning. Good morning. Of course, there are, of course, the ordinance that has, that is on the agenda, and then, of course, we have the purchase item on the City Manager's agenda. And we want to, before you have opportunity to vote on the negotiation of this contract through this RFP, we want to provide you with information of just what's included in the, in the RFP and in the contract, so that you can make that informed decision. We have...
Thank you, sir. And perhaps, just want to make it clear before the Deputy City Manager gets into this presentation. The vote that I will be asking you to take on my agenda under purchasing will, would, will be to authorize negotiation of a contract. We are not asking you to approve a contract today. We're asking you, as we do with all other RFPs, to authorize negotiation, negotiation only. And then, we would come back to you once that negotiation has concluded, to proceed with the contract. So, I wanted to just make that clear before she gets into this today. May I approach him, I think?
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a glare on this thing, and it's hard to see the names.
Thank you. So, I guess, this feels a little bit different than the normal when we go through the RFP process. Do we usually ask for, do we usually ask to authorize the negotiations for a contract?
Yes.
During, that's all part of the process?
Yes.
Okay.
Typically, when I bring an RFP to you on my, on the purchase agenda, we are asking you to authorize negotiation.
Okay, so, we're going through, we are not deviating from our normal procedures. This is all part of the normal procedures.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, help, help clarify the step we're doing here. As I understand it, our ordinance needs to be amended to allow us to negotiate with an outside entity to handle our animal control. Is that correct?
Not to negotiate.
I don't know that the ordinance needs to be amended. The, if the resolution passes, the negotiations will be finalized, and an agreement brought back to you at a later date.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, the ordinance amendment that is number five on our agenda is a housekeeping measure that will need to be in place, assuming you award this contract to a private provider. That's, that's all that is.
Okay, so, we're amending the ordinance to allow...
Right.
To go forward.
And, of course, we won't vote on the amendment until next week at the earliest, but this other resolution the City Manager has for today's approval will allow that to be finalized, that private contract.
That's correct.
Well, let me just, let me, let me...
It'll allow you to begin negotiations.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, I think some may have already gone on, but continue and, and finalize also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Well, just, Mr. City Manager, if you would, just for the public's sake, the, you know, so there's no misunderstanding, just the clarification in general, what we're doing on the first reading today. It does look like we're moving forward with approval, but that's not what I'm hearing. So, if you would, just for the sake of the system watching, could you explain that a little bit more in detail? Here is what I understand, and I'd ask the City Attorney to correct me if I, if my understanding is incorrect. What, what the first reading the ordinance is doing, as he's indicated, is housekeeping. It would allow this council the flexibility of going with an outside private contract for animal care control service operations, or you could opt to continue to operate in-house. And so, I don't think it's approving and limiting you one way or the other. You, you have the option.
That's right.
If you, if you do this housekeeping measure in the ordinance, because right now, the ordinance says it's with, with the city, this would allow you the option of contracting out or remaining, continuing with the city operations. So, you have the options, option. There's that flexibility. And so, if you approve that, and we're negotiating, if you don't approve it, there's no need for us to be negotiating with a private contractor, because the ordinance does not allow us to do it. So, so if you do that, you have the best of both worlds you can, or you don't have to do it, private contract. And so, what we're doing and negotiating and, and with the private contractor, let me just go a step further and say, you know, here are the elements of what we are negotiating. Animal care services, animal care enforcement services, adoption and replacement, excuse me, adoption and placement services, revenue, how that's handled, property, equipment, and vehicles, because we own the animal care facility. Personnel, you know, we have inmate labor. We don't turn our inmate labor over to private contracts and so forth, and, and our city employees who are currently animal control officers and doing all the other functions that they do, how will we deal with our employees? Veterinarian services, owner, owner notification, injured animals, how that will be handled. Return to owner services, how that's going to be handled. Community programs, administrative services, emergency management, disaster planning, required records and reports, and then hours of operations. So, you know, we, we have been intentional, as we have already, as the City Attorney indicated, had some ongoing negotiation, and we'll continue that negotiation, but we have been intentional to, that this process is slow, because we'd rather keep it at a slow pace than to rush and, and not get it right. And so, we've been really intentional about that for your sake as the elected officials, for our sake, because, you know, we may have to still hear from the citizens of Columbus if things are not going right with the private contract, if we move forward with it. And so, we want a smooth transition, and we want animal care control services to be obviously better under a private contract than it has been under the government. So, we gotta get it right, and so that's why we have been slow and intentional. But, but that's what, while we have the ordinance, as I've explained, that's why we're negotiating, and you have the option, when we finalize those negotiations, to say yay or nay. And if you say nay, we continue forward with the city operations. If you say yes, then we start to transfer and transition to the private provider. Deputy City Manager, Goodwin.
And with that, we just want to go through, let you know kind of where we are, and, of course, you have seen this timeline, and, of course, today would be the November the ninth, where council approves to negotiate, as the City Manager has indicated, the final terms. First reading, again, with the ordinance that is on the City Attorney's agenda, second reading, November the sixteenth, and then, of course, the start of the contract would be after the first of the year, as we continue to negotiate during this time. The background and the reason we're looking in terms of privatization is, again, we've indicated seeking proposals from these qualified non-profit shelters to oper, who have operated for a minimum of five years in Muskogee County. Why are we doing this? And that is to determine whether or not animal control services can be provided privately in a more cost-effective, efficient, and professional manner. The scope of the contract that we will go through includes the lease of the Francis Case Steed Animal Shelter, again, our Code of Ordinances as amended, we've talked about, operating hours, staffing, the current staff and positions, use of vehicles, animal care services, which is, are the shelter services. We are looking into also animal control field services, administrative services, performance standards, financial impact. On the Francis Case Steed Animal Shelter, the lease terms would be the triple-net lease, which includes, of course, all stationary equipment and the existing furniture of that facility. That includes, again, the length of the lease would run simultaneous with animal services contract. Those responsibilities, the city will continue with the building, taking care of the roof, foundation, and the exterior walls, everything on the interior of the facility, such as plumbing and HVAC, electrical interior structure, vehicles and equipment is the responsibility of the vendor. The awarded contractor, again, will maintain the current or increased shelter hours of operations. They will maintain or increase field service hours of operations. They will maintain current or increased veterinarian... They will maintain current or increased veterinarian hours and be responsible for enforcing the animal and foul ordinance, which is chapter five of the Columbus Code in its entirety. Again, you have that before you. In terms of the current staff and the positions, the contractors is expected to increase and maintain the appropriate staffing levels to manage both shelter operations and field operations in order to meet the community's expectations. Our animal control is currently, of course, as you know, throughout Public Works and many of our other departments are experiencing shortages in staffing. But again, those positions that are budgeted in the animal control division includes the division manager, a part-time veterinarian, administrative coordinator, three communication technicians, one shelter supervisor, two shelter animal control officers, one volunteer coordinator, one field supervisor, eight field animal control officers, and one deceased animal control officer. Again, of those, we still have a few vacancies within the department. The current staffing, again, is that all current staff will be given the option to apply for any open positions within the awarded contractor's organization. They have to apply like anyone else with the organization. All of our tenured staff will have the same option to, for placement within the Department of Public Works or within CCG, any other open positions. In terms of the vehicles, there are 12 animal control trucks, vehicles, that the contractor would have use of. One deceased animal truck. Preventive maintenance on these vehicles shall be maintained by the contractor. All fuel and tire needs will be the responsibility of the awarded contractor. Again, they also will be provided the animal control equipment, which include various types of cages, traps, cat dens, and of course crates through the Department of Agriculture. So, we have that list of the inventory that we will provide to them. Shelter services, they will be responsible for intake and that includes unattended stray or animal surrendered animals, initial health screenings, return to owner, adoptions, and placements. They will also be responsible for the day-to-day cleaning of all 58 runs, as well as the daily care of those shelter animals. Medical care, emergency and non-emergency. Management of the microchip identification program. Notification to, of owners. Notification to state of all shelter requirements, disease, hoarding, cruelty, and the like. They will also be expected to respond to any and all calls for assistance. That includes capture, trap, receive or retrieve stray or unwanted animals, unattended domestic animals, dogs, cats, horses, and of course, animal-to-animal aggression calls. They will also be responsible for responding to animal-to-human bites. Wildlife concerns to include bats, snakes, deer, opossums, raccoons, and the like. Respond to public safety requests for assistance. Deceased animals, collection, removal, and disposal. And prepare reports. Sight are warned according to the ordinance. Act as witness prosecutor in classification proceedings and court. Again, these are all things that we currently do that they will have total responsibility for. Administrative services include to dispatch all calls for assistance. Management of the animals' registration programs and tags. Again, collection, deposit, and reporting of all revenue to a designated city accountant. Management of all records pertaining to the empowerment, adoption, placement, or the returning to owner issues. Customer service by assisting the public with any of the services. Manage all social media platforms and appropriate response to open requests, open records requests within the allotted three days. In terms of performance standards, they have to have and meet timely response to requests for services. Appropriate and timely monthly shelter reports. Implementation and improvements of all public programs. Their other performance standards include continued decrease in euthanasia rates. Provide staff support for animal control advisory board as it carries out its duties under the ordinance. The director of Public Works shall serve as the contract administrator. And in terms of the current financial data, you can look, see where the current budget is for 20 and 21. 1.3 million approved budget for 2020. And 2021, a $1.2 million approved budget. And then, of course, the revenue here in 20 was 100, just over 191,000. And 21, just over $188,000. And then, of course, the annual expenses. If approved, the animal care control will work or transition plan with the approved vendor to ensure that they get what they need to get started and to maintain the contract. The city will begin an aggressive education program to the public on what to expect and who to call. Bottom line is, it will no longer be the responsibility of the city for anything relative to animal care and control. And we know that we've got to get that word out to the public because even though, if approved, you know, citizens are still going to call the city. That's who they've been accustomed to calling, so they'll still contact the city. We have to really let them know just who they need to call. When those calls come into us, and they will come into us, we will, all we will do is transfer those to that approved vendor. They are responsible. So when you call us and you have a constituent that has called you, we're, all we're going to do is to transfer that call to the appropriate vendor that you have approved. City will be out of that business, totally. And so, we definitely want to ensure that during this transition, that we provide them everything that they need. But there are still some issues that we've got to negotiate with them, of course. Financial impact, cost is one of those, and a few other things that we're still working out, terms of the lease and some other things. Right now, we don't have those to provide, but that's part of the negotiation process. And I just, any questions? And I am with my pooch pepper.
Counsel Woodson.
Ms. Goodwin, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very clear. I just have one question. What is the makeup of the board? Is there anyone on the board that represents public service with voting? Because I think it's important that there's someone that represents us and our concern on the board and is able to also vote. Can you fill me in on that?
Absolutely, we agree with that, and that is one of those things that we will be talking with them about and negotiating. We feel that we definitely need to have someone on there with a vote just to maintain and to ensure that we know what's going on.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to ensure that because the phone calls come to us.
Absolutely.
And we want to be able to, be able to contact someone in Public Works and be able to give us direct answers instead of trying to go around the world.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Counsel House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you put the timeline back up?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand what it says.
Yes, sir.
The first reading and the second reading that are on the timeline refer to the ordinance change to allow us to have a private contractor or the city do animal control, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the projected contract start date is January 3rd. So, when do we vote on the final contract being approved? We, the council, are talking about. Do we, or when does that happen?
We would want to do that if we could, November the sixteenth or December the seventh. So that's what we'll be looking at, the first, yes. Preferably perhaps December the seventh.
I think it'd be certainly, we've got two meetings in December, probably.
One of those.
Yeah, so maybe December the seventh.
Just one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, by December 14th, at the latest, if you're, if you're going to do it, January 1.
Okay.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to piggyback on Counsel Woodson's comments, the question I have was very similar, but it, we talked earlier a few weeks ago about council having a point of contact. And when you mentioned the director of Public Works would be the contract administrator, would that be our point of contact if we get calls?
Absolutely, that is our point, yeah, because he is going to be the one that will be managing the contract, or the director would.
Well, and I would go so far as to say, or designate.
Or designate, that's correct.
Because it may be one of the deputy assistant directors or a particular person who is responsible for watchdogging the contract.
But the director would make that, that call and who that person will be.
So if we put it in right, anywhere it should say, director or designate.
Or designate, correct.
There you go, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Counsel Davis.
Mr. City Manager, I, you know, I'm probably going to ask for, just looking through this, you know, probably ask for some detailed information. Probably not going to get it here today, but I'm going to ask a question about, I kind of look for, I guess a word picture would be like, let's just say like buying a property or buying a house, okay? I'm buying a service, basically the city's buying a service here. So you're looking at the due diligence. I just want to make sure that, you know, from my perspective, that there's a few steps that, that the confidence levels are there and that, you know, that those check-offs can be there. And it would probably, most likely, deal with the oversight aspect, making sure that the services provided are being done, not only in a timely manner, but being provided adequately and appropriately. And how do you, how do you have that oversight there? I think the, the aspect of the understanding of the financial standpoint, I think on both sides, from a solvency standpoint, that we understand that the services can be provided with the appropriate funds and that the entity can and will be there to continue to support operations. Sometimes, financial statements are really important to understand when it comes to the solvency of services. I would also just like to, well, let me just stop there. Will, let me ask this question. Can we have access to that information so we can make a very, you know, for the sake of the citizens, I mean, we are giving up a service that's been part of the city for a long time. Maybe not giving it up, we're just contracting it out, so to speak. And hopefully, we're getting a better service that's going to be provided, as you stated earlier. I mean, that would be the goal and intention. But in order to assure that confidence and that we're making a good decision that those documents can be provided. And I would ask you, do we just come to you? Do we call you, or how do we, if we have those questions before we get to some of these points on the timeline, how do we get that information?
Well, I think what I want to outline, and I have not shared this with our negotiators yet. And that's why I was making the point about Public Works Director or designate. And so, what I'd like for the Public Works Director to do is, it's going to be an added responsibility, perhaps. But I think we need someone who is going to be the ombudsman, so, you know, for the animal care control contract. And, and I would like to see written in that contract an understanding that that designate or ombudsman is going, is required to do monitoring visits. Where, you know, when I started my career, I was a monitor for the state of Mississippi. And where you actually physically go on-site, you inspect, you do entrance reviews and exit reviews, and you write reports, and you bring them back and you give it to the Public Works Director, who's going to give it to the deputy city manager, and they'll pass it as necessary to me and will give you the council reports. And so, they would be considered, what I consider, monitoring visits, that we got to go and look, see, and inspect what we expect and turn those reports in. And, and so, if council members get a call and there's a citizen who has an issue, you'll know who that ombudsman, that person is, and will refer that to them to go and respond back. And so, that's what I'm going to be talking to, the deputy city manager and those who are negotiating the contract about. They didn't know this, I just came up with this today, sitting here in this seat. But that's kind of what, because bottom line is if, I mean, you're going to get the calls. And, and, and we need someone at the city who's responsible for keeping a check on it and responding back to your concerns, our concerns. And they'll be communicating with you. They'll be communicating with the provider. And, and during those monitoring visits, if there are some things that we're concerned about, we'll point them out. And, and typically, you know, when you do a monitoring visit and you find, you have findings, you give them 15 days to respond to those findings. And I would not expect to hear from that ombudsman until they've shared the findings and the findings have been resolved, and then they send them forward for information. So I'm looking at a process like that.
And I think that would be, it would be appropriate, it's my understanding, it would be handled out of, out of your office, the executive administration operations.
Not directly out of my office, but out of Public Works.
Well, and that would, that would get the, I guess my, my point was the assurance level of, you know, for whatever reason, you know, things are just not working out in the relationship, that, that we would have.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
You got the authority from that standpoint.
With what I've just outlined, it'll all be documented and we'll know. And if it's not working, you know, I'm not shy about saying so and doing something about it, you know?
The, I guess some of the areas that I would be concerned about, I don't have any problem with, I want to say, household animals or domestic animals, dogs, cats, things like that. I think, you know, I feel confident that those matters can be addressed. I would think that from the citizen's perspective, and, and that's the viewpoint I'm talking about. I know the city does some things really, really well. For example, the picking up the dead animals around, around town. I mean, I've always been pretty impressed by how we take care of those aspects. There's, there's amazing amount of, of that kind of, I guess, carnage out on the road that, that we have to clean up. I mean, I don't even think citizens even realize from that standpoint. But I think the city does that well. I think with the wild animals, I think with enforcement, those are some of the key areas that I'm looking at, I'm concerned about, that how those, say, enforcement, how those relationships with the general public, how that's going to take place and that they can be confident that, you know, that they would be treated with, with respect and dignity and that their, their needs are, their needs are met. You know, I, I know how the city can handle that and how we can address it, but if we contract out, those are things that I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're checking off on and that, you know, I can tell the citizens that, hey, you can have 100% confidence that, you know, these, these services are going to be provided and be provided in a, in a very appropriate manner.
Yeah, I, I think you can, and, and they should know that if, if the private contractor is not doing that... contractor is not doing that, then the way the terms are written, I mean, the agreement is a, an initial 12-month agreement, and then it can be renewed for an additional nine 12-month periods, or 12 months, and it's contingent upon mutual agreement. So if it's not working, then, you know, we, we have the option to revert back to city operation.
And the final concern I got is, if there's needed extra facilities, or new facilities, or things of that nature, will the city be in partnership, from that standpoint, to help and assist capital replacement, new facilities, things like that? It may not be that the city's responsible for operating that, but certainly be able to provide the assistance there. Is, is, has there been discussions along those lines?
I don't, I don't know, but.
Yes. It, as budget allows, and of course, the, that information would then go to public works, who would then submit it in their budget for approval, because it's still our equipment, our facility.
But, but we, we want it to be a partnership.
Yes.
I mean, we, we're not just going to say, once, we're going to wash our hands, you know, we cannot do that. And I know we've been dramatic over the last few weeks, but we're going to do our part.
And that's just why we've been so deliberate in the whole process.
And that's a good, I like that word, partnership. I think the citizens can relate to that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, you know, I mean, that's why this has taken a while.
Yeah.
Because as you can tell, as you start talking about the minutia, it really gets, I mean, you have to cover every eventuality.
That's right.
So that you don't have any issues in the partnership going forward. And I think that certainly the discussions are, have been fruitful, from what I've heard, in trying to clarify this, and, but I got to tell you, I'm extr, I'm, I'm very optimistic about this. I think that the, I think the respondents have, have allowed, they're going to have a better access to leveraging volunteers than I think the city did, and there'll be some resources the city had that they won't have. But I think on balance, it's a, represents an opportunity. It's just going to be important, I think, that everybody continue to remember that it is in fact a partnership. That means the communication has to stay open. And I think that's also been why there's been some frustration I've heard in the community, because councillors don't talk about this process. That's to benefit those that have submitted proposals, because if council, if a councillor or a mayor or anybody else has any communication with anybody bidding on any RFP in the city, it could legally be kicked out. And so, we were trying to make sure that that doesn't, that doesn't happen, so.
So, so, Mayor and Council, I can assure you, we want this to work if we contract it out, and we are going to work hard every day to make sure it works, and, and, and I commit that I want it to be a partnership. So you have that assurance.
Okay. Doesn't appear to be any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Did y'all, City Manager, was, did y'all have anything else you wanted to add on that topic?
No, sir. Just, I feel counsel, we want to take up your idle management at this stage.
We, we don't have a quorum at this particular point, so we'll need to get some of the councillors back.
Well, we'll wait until my agenda.
Mayor, we'll wait until my agenda.
All right. Mayor, we have one other request for a short executive session concerning a personnel matter, and that was all we had listed.
Okay. Counselor Crabbe, you want to wait? We, we don't have a quorum to vote on, but we'll bring it up after the city manager's agenda. All right, we'll move on to the public agenda. And first, Mr. Paul Olson, regarding GMA guidelines, purchase of the Sinovus Building, funding for W.C. Bradley project, and election results. And, and Mr. Olson, what I'll do is, I'll signal you with one minute, the buzzer's broken.
Okay. Because last time, the clock didn't work at all.
I, yeah, and so, I will, I'll give you a, a notification. I won't start it until you finish giving your name and your address.
Sure. Michael King, if you could put up the view graph up that I had on the slide there. Okay. Name is Paul Olson. I live at 13830 Upton Lane. Good morning, City Council. Just want to wish veterans Happy Veterans Day, November 11th, this Thursday. Mayor Henderson, when you made your announcement for the purchase of Sinovus at, for 25 million, it was a late Friday afternoon, after the time for anyone who could speak publicly on the public agenda about this purchase, it was 3:00. The deadline for anybody to put themselves on the, the agenda is noon, and when I called you personally and asked you if I could give a personal point of privilege, you laughed and said, "No, I can't do that, Paul." Well, in the past, I'm sorry, but Julius Hunter gave me a personal point of privilege, and I really wanted to talk about it, but I was shut down. Your purchase of Sinovus Building at 1148 Broadway can be found on LoopNet, which is up on the screen, with the building was built in 1957, making it 14 years older than the Government Center, which you are tearing down and spending another $25 million in renovation costs. What we have not been explained is how that is being itemized, how are you spending the 25 million, and you guys just basically rubber stamped that. The reason why I ask that is because there's, asbestos was put in to walls and flooring back in the 50s and 60s, and I'm just wondering if it's being spent for hazmat in that respect there. Never got an answer from you, Mayor, when I asked that. Mayor Henderson, you worked at CBNT Sinovus at this location. In fact, I went to go visit you one time, you were gone, but you were the Vice President of Governmental Affairs. I asked, and I'm going to ask you now, do you have any, did you receive any stock options from CBNT slash Sinovus when you left?
You can finish your comments.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking that, if you did, then you were to disclose that according to the city charter, when it came to that, because it's a conflict of interest. Doug Jeffcoat was a listing agent for W.C. Bradley Real Estate for the Sinovus property, and when I asked you, Mayor, who's our buyer's agent, mum was the word, and basically, it came out, since I have a real estate license, Charmin, you know what a dual agent is. A dual agent is serving on behalf of the seller, that's where his loyalty is, and he's also working on behalf of the buyer's agent. And I have a problem with that, because we should have a buyer's agent in that respect there. On most real estate commissions for that, it's 10%, that's a rule of thumb. Charmin, you know that. So of that $25 million sale, W.C. Bradley got $2.5 million. I asked for that net balance sheet from the city attorneys, they said at that time that the contract is still pending until the end of March. They, they put some things on there. Now, we're going to talk about, according to the Muskogee County, and the other thing I wanted to reiterate on, $25 million dedicated towards renovating the Sinovus Building on Broadway, but we couldn't dedicate that to the Government Center when it was 14 years newer, and the problem is, there was nothing structurally wrong with the Government Center. Never did get an engineering report from you guys, which I asked way back in June, when I first came here, but I promise you, there was nothing structurally wrong with the Government Center. And according to the Muskogee County Board of Elections, it cost the taxpayers $100,000 for the one-item SPOSS referendum. Hundred thousand, guys. Election was stolen by you, Mayor, and the council for orchestrating in an off-year election, and the worst voter turnout in the history of Columbus, at 8% of the registered voters. 11,000 of the 130,000. It was an abomination. It was brought, it was bought by Matt Swift, who was basically the chairperson of, of Improved Columbus LLC, and basically, those people who were the big donors were the people who basically are going to profit off of this thing, or they've profited off tax abatements in the past. And since it's a public record, you can go to, to the Board of Elections website, I'm going to start naming names, contributions made to Improve Columbus LLC. W.C. Bradley, real estate, 15,000. Not bad for a $2.5 million, not bad, giving 15,000 back. Sinovus was there, but it did have PAC, P-A-C, which is Political Action Committee. If you look at it, so, and you look at the Tillman Act, a bank cannot give a contribution to any campaign unless it's through a political action committee, and that was not denoted. John Turner, that was $5,000. John Turner, $5,000. Brad Turner, $5,000. Those are the family that created CBNT slash Sinovus, okay? Chamber of Commerce, nonprofit, 501(c)(3). Board of Directors, you're going to see Alexander on there. You're going to see a lot of people who contributed to the campaign literally themselves, and they're the ones that gave $6,500 of their money. Steve Butler, $10,000. Woodruff Real Estate LLC, $5,000.
Twenty seconds.
Summerstone LLC.
Twenty seconds, Paul.
Five, $5,000. Gracile Properties, $5,000. JBA Capital, $5,000. Lockwood, $10,000. Alexander Electric, $1,500. Brassfield and Gorey, $1,000. Matt Swift, $1,000. And the real travesty is the expenditures, the expenditures of 64,000 was all spent on Monroe Marketing in Savannah, Georgia. So, that's the only expenditures they had. And so, the, the thing, the hypocrisy, I know, the hypocrisy here, let me just finish up. The hypocrisy here is, when they said that 30% on their flyers is going to be spent from outside entities, here they are.
You can, Mr. Olson, you can come back at the end of the clerk's message, finish up. I just, I can't provide you an opportunity I don't have.
I know. But I'm just saying to you, there is hypocrisy in the propaganda they were putting out.
Got it. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to, next is Ms. Teresa Elamene, representing the Southern Anti-Racism Network, regarding Parents Summit and Cure Violence Columbus. I'll try to give you a notification when you've got about a minute left.
Oh, okay. Teresa Elamene, 3911 Steamwell Road. I'm glad that Mr. Garrett is here. We've been concentrating in Wilson Homes, which I believe is in your district. It's an interesting district with a lot of affluency and a big poverty place inside of your district. And it's a district that includes a place where people have been murdered, and I say children murdered. So we are glad to be working with the parents at Wilson Homes. Tomorrow, we'll be at the Doubletree. We've been doing these Parents Summit since 2012. The first one was at the Mildred Terry Library, and we have used the libraries traditionally for the summits over these eight-plus years. We didn't do one last year because of COVID, and the library has not opened up the meeting rooms yet. So we're, if you're coming tomorrow, please bring your checkbooks, because the Doubletree is not free. And what we would like to note, we attached the program schedule so that all of you could see, and I would just like to say, we are so honored that the mayor is taking time out of his schedule to be our first speaker, and I wanted you to have a copy of the book.
Thank you.
And it's just such a joy working with Danita Gibson-Lewis, who is also one of the MCs, and we will have a little time after you and the superintendent speak for a little Q and A. So I hope you can be there at least for the first hour, Mr. Mayor. I do want to talk a little bit about the violence. I am so distraught that we're up to 61 homicides by the coroner's count. Katina Williams gave a different count in a meeting recently. They use their numbers differently, but she said 67 was the count, and I'm not sure where she developed that in terms of lives lost. But the last two, the 28-year-old man who had lost his life a day after his birthday, and then before that, I think it was a 14-year-old, this is beyond out of control. And I do want to tell you, I've been talking to the people in Durham, where the so-called Cure Violence model has been used. It's misogynistic and sexist, and I said it to Cedric Hill and to Reggie Lewis on the 28th and the 29th, when they acting like it's a done deal. Durham says that they want a system change. They realize it's not working well after five years, and I can tell you, they put a whole lot more money in it than $500,000. As a matter of fact, the county commission chair told me that it's difficult working with men who are working with other men who have spent a significant amount of their lives in cages with other men. Talking them down from the violence is just a small piece of what has to be done. We have got to get parents, it's a 10-year plan. It's a 10-year plan. So I want you to come out for the Parents Summit, and we need to continue this discussion about Cure Violence. I'm opposed to it, because I know it's not workable in the way that it's presented. Men talking to men is just not enough. It's not enough. Women are out here working like crazy to try to save our children, and so, it's not enough. Cure Violence needs to be revisited, and with some serious accountability, and I said that to Cedric Hill and Reggie Lewis to their faces. I just want you to know.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'll see you tomorrow, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. I'll see you tomorrow.
Tomorrow a little bit early.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a, we had another individual sign up for the public agenda, but she was unable to make it today, so she's rescheduling for another, another date. Without being, with that being said, we'll move on to the city manager's agenda. Mr. Huglen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item I've got is Plan First Redesignation. Plan First is DCA's program to recognize and reward communities that clearly demonstrate an established pattern of successful.
There's a motion approved from Counsel Woodson, and a second from Mayor Pro Tem. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Bruce, please cue it. Councillors, register your votes, please. There we go. It's passed.
For approval, are we to pass the second?
No. Number two.
Two?
Two.
Yeah. We, yeah, we, we're on item two of his agenda. That's okay.
And so, Mayor, I do want to commend our planning department for this Plan First redesignation. That, that is a big deal. Next, I've got expansion of an existing access and utility easement, and we're asking your approval.
Motion approved from Counsel Tucker, second from Mr., the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All right, please cue it. Councillors, cast your votes. All right, and that's approved.
I've got street acceptance, Blackman Lane has shown.
Second. Motion approved from Counsel Crabbe, second for Counsel House. Any discussion? All right, Bruce, cue it. Please vote. That passes.
Got a $500,000 no match.
Second.
And a motion to approve item four, the Brownfield Assessment Grant, and a second. Is there any discussion?
Assistant motion, Mayor. There's no good for four, five, six, seven, all right.
Okay. There's substitute. Okay, there's a substitute motion to approve all the grants listed, items four through seven. And there is a second. If you, can you cue that, or we need to take it? We'll just take a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye. Is there anybody opposed? All right, please walk through those grants.
Sure. And the first one was a Brownfield Assessment Grant, $500,000. There's no match required with that, and that is to conduct Brownfield assessments of properties within the Southside Railroad corridor areas of Columbus. And the next one is a Marathon Petroleum Foundation Grant. It's $5,000, and the grant monies will be used to purchase specialized equipment to assist in rescue operations at the facility located on Miller Road. And so, it's for fire EMS, obviously. And then I've got a Firehouse Sub Public Safety Grant for fire EMS, $8,850. And it's for the purchase of an inflatable boat and boat motor. And then number seven was a Water Resource Development Act Grant. We will submit this application. There's a bill that will authorize Army Corps Corps-related water resources projects such as dams, levees, shore protection, dredging, and ecosystem replenishment. And the city may be required to pay up to 50% local match of a feasibility study, but once the study is completed, and if Congress appropriates funding, the federal government will pay between 20% and 100% of total construction costs, depending on projects. And so, the projects currently planned for submission for us related to dredging of watershed, flood control structures, and a request for a feasibility study for Lake Oliver, which will require concurrence of Georgia Power and the waterworks and the local residents up there. That's what we're looking at.
All right, very good. And I did want to thank Deputy Chief Harrell for being here for the representing CFMS on those other two grants.
Yes. And so, I've got purchases, Mayor. Got anchored.
Multitude of motions for items A through F on the purchases. We'll count one of them as a second. Are there any that anybody wants pulled for further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Oh, we, okay. I didn't know we could cue that one. That's fine. That's approved.
So, Mayor, the first one was an, is an anchor tenant for concession and retail services at the Civic Center, and they've got Brewster's Real Ice Cream as in location E within the Civic Center. But the contractor will pay an annual lease payment for the exclusive use of their concession location, including the use and maintenance of existing equipment. But that's A. And then we've got 13, 20, 22 Ford F-150 trucks for parts and rack, much-needed equipment. Then we've got one Ford 350 for parts and rack. Animal Care Control Services that we've explained, and we are committed to that partnership, as I stated. Then we've got uninterruptible power supply for information technology rooms at the Citizen Service Center. We've got bus repair services for Metra. Those are the purchases. And Mayor, Mayor, I've got two more updates. You've heard from the animal control update. And so, I've got American Rescue Plans, sales tax update, and other projects. Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge will handle those, and then we'll have a monthly finance update from our finance director. Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
Hold on, we've got a couple. I'm sorry. Councilor Garrett?
I need to, I'd stepped out of the room, so I didn't realize that vote was wrapped up in there. But I've got to recuse from the animal control, which is D, because I am on the Board of Paws.
Okay. All right, motion, motion allow Councilor Garrett to recuse himself, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It did pass, by the way. City Attorney, did you have something to?
Nothing else.
Okay. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I have just several updates for you today. First, to start off with the American Rescue Plan, and I won't go through all the specifics of the ARP. We've talked about this for several months now. Just a reminder, the uses of the funds can be for any of these purposes: public health emergency, essential workers, revenue replacement for the government, and then investment in the water sewer and broadband. The city was allocated, both as a city and a county, $78 million. We have received the first allocation of $39 million. The second distribution is anticipated to be next June sometime. The funding that was approved by Council for specific purposes, just to give you an update on where we are with that approval in those particular items. The automation of the garbage collection, the RFP is under development. We hope to have that out by the end of the year for the garbage vehicles for household garbage, recycling, and yard waste. The containers are already been determined, and so, those will be coming forward relatively soon. The authorization for the ambulances was on September the 14th. We expect delivery the first part of December, so another month, and we'll have those ambulances in Muskogee County. The Community Safeguard Program, Cure Violence, the summer youth programs, as well as the cameras, the cameras are underway right now. We anticipate having an update to Council sometime in December. So, within the next month or so, we'll have an update on the camera purchases for Council's consideration. Broadband cybersecurity upgrades of $3 million. We've already encumbered $827,000, and that's for upgrades to the CSC and the Civic Center. The RFP is in process for a contractor to install fiber. Those bids are due back November 10th, so that should be coming forward to Council within the next month or so. This would install fiber at the public safety building, the fire stations, the jail, and then other facilities. Revenue recovery of $3.5 million. The revenue recovery, hotel motel tax revenue recovery at $2,476,000, and that will be distributed based on the hotel motel tax distribution between those specific entities. And then the general fund revenue recovery of the balance of $1,082,000. Premium pay for public safety and other essential workers, that was actually paid to the employees on October the 15th. The small business grant program, nonprofit grant program, and economic tourism grant program. We anticipate having that application released on December the 1st. So, we're very close to having that application released. So, we'll be providing that information so that you can share that as much as possible to get the applicants the information.
Excuse me. Deputy City Manager, Councilor Woodson?
Yes, Deputy City Manager Hodge, I have a question for you. Would we be able to see the application before you release it on December 1st? The reason I said that, because someone asked me, is that going to be like really complicated, almost like an RFP? And I said, I don't know. I never even looked at one before.
We are using the format of the application that was done with our CDBGCV program. So, we're using that application and tailoring it to this particular purpose. So, they'll be required to provide, you know, their business license, their financial information, invoices, you know, proof of payment, the typical things that we would require to make any kind of payment to an entity.
When you have it ready, can you send it to me so I can look at it? Because I do want to help some businesses with it, and I want to get familiar with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then on administration, the project financial analyst is currently going through our onboarding process, so we hope to have that person onboard within the next several weeks. So, that is the total of the funding for the $39 million, and we're moving forward on all those items that Council has approved. We did get some information from ACCG, and just thought we would share this with the Council and the citizens on what other counties are doing with their ARP funding, anywhere from ambulances, public health response. You know, some of the counties are still in their planning process. Chatham County is still planning. Cobb County is still in their planning process and hasn't moved forward with anything specific. First responder pay, water and sewer were some of the things that we saw. A new public health building in Fayette County. Harris County to install glass partitions. HVAC replacement in their courthouse premium pay. We saw that quite often from other counties. Water and sewer lines, water extensions are some things that other counties are doing. Public safety premium pay, again. HVAC units in Stevens County, and some of these counties are smaller counties than Muskogee, obviously. Sewer, HVAC ventilation improvements in Whitfield. So, this was information that was provided to us by ACCG, and just thought we would share that with you at this time. The state fiscal recovery funds, that application deadline was due October 31st. There was $875 million that was available for specific purposes. They received $14.6 billion in requests. So, we did submit applications for our stormwater infrastructure, broadband infrastructure, and also to expand our small business grant program. We anticipate we'll receive some type of a notice in January of next year. But there were a lot of entities that were eligible to apply, and obviously, with $14.6 billion in applications, everyone applied for those funds. An update on the special purpose?
Excuse me just a second. I'm sorry. Councilor Tucker?
Did we get that information for, I think it was the law enforcement grant through the state, the ARP?
Well, she's talking about the $1,000.
We did. I know I've received half a thousand of them. I forwarded them all, too.
Yeah, well, I actually, the finance, I signed off on it yesterday, I believe, the application.
We had to acknowledge and sign off on the terms and conditions of that grant, and then that gives us the ability to apply and make the submission. So, we're in that process, and the finance director might be able to add additional information to that.
The state public safety?
Yes, ma'am.
And first responders. That's what it was.
Well, let me correct.
Okay.
She's telling me I didn't sign it yet. I thought I'd signed something yesterday, and I thought it was that.
Yeah, and that was the thing. I wasn't sure if we had voted on that next Tuesday.
I don't know what I'd do if they didn't keep me straight.
I saw her come around the corner, but I just wanted to make sure, and I know Angelica has it down pat, but that when we look at the individuals that will receive the grant, it's more than just the law enforcement officers. It's like EMS and the correctional officers, and I think it even had juvenile officers that were in there. But it was more than just, you know, the police and the sheriff.
Yes, and, and of course, we've shared with all of the public safety agencies who is eligible for that funding.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. I don't know all the list. That's why I'm saying that, because, I mean, because if you called off one that's not on that list, we're going to hear from them, surely.
But I, but I think the important thing is to know that we, every time one of those notifications comes in, it goes to the people that have been handling it.
That's right.
So, they, they are up, as up to date as they can be, I think. Because I know the city manager receives them. Everything ACCG sends.
That's right.
I get.
That's right.
As well as GMA, and we forward it on to them.
And I think it's good, Mayor, because you get it, and I get it, and we both send them to them so that we make sure that they don't miss anything.
Yeah, so the HR Director and the Finance Director are managing that process. They're on top of it, and we'll get that processed. So, on the special purpose, local option, sales tax, just to provide an update, the vote obviously was last week, excuse me, the election was certified yesterday. So, sales tax collections will begin April 1st of '22. We will not receive our first deposit until the end of May for April collection. So, we are several months away from any type of collection, but it will start April the 1st. There was $400 million in projects. What was also authorized was $200 million in general obligation bonds to be issued for the Judicial Center, and then all other projects would be considered pay-as-you-go. Just as a reminder, these are the projects that were approved on the ballot last week. So, the timeline for the SPOS financing, we are in bond document preparation mode for this particular bond issue. The credit rating agency presentations have been confirmed. We will finalize those bond documents the first of the year. We're anticipating the bond closing around February. And then the projected first bond payment, depending on how the bond documents, or the bond is sized, is anticipated for January of '23 to allow us time to have collections since April in order to make that first payment.
Councilor Crabbe, did you have?
Yes, I have first. Thank you. On these pay-as-you-go projects, how are they prioritized?
Getting to that.
Okay, thanks.
And so, the estimated timeline for the Judicial Center, January to May of '23 will be the programming and the design. May of '23 is the projected date for the demolition of the wings and the parking deck in order for construction to begin in May of '23. So, this is the tentative timeline that we're looking at for the Judicial Center, with completion in May of '25. So, I think Councilor Crabbe asked about the other projects. We are finalizing that project budget plan for those pay-as-you-go projects. Things that we can do now in anticipation of the collection to begin is to start developing the RFPs and the specification for design services for specific projects, meaning the outdoor pool and splash pad replacement, the Bull Creek Golf Course clubhouse replacement, as well as Oxbo Golf Course renovations, the fire stations for six and eight renovations, the Fire Station 5 replacement, River Road Tower replacement, Trade Center parking garage, and the Civic Center renovations. We can start developing those RFPs now for design services. There are things that will have to take place, that will take some time into FY '23 for the design of those, so that will be part of the program budget. Most of the other projects will be an allocation each year for the roads, for stormwater improvements, for public safety, equipment improvements. And those will come to you. We'll have a budget for you to approve for that 10-year period. But those specific purchases will come to you as part of the annual budget process each year. So, that will be coming soon.
And Mayor, if I may, so, as you look at those pay-as-you-go projects, we start collect, you know, it's collection April of 2022, right?
That's correct.
And we expect to see the first deposits May of 2022. And so, you see outdoor pools, splash pads on the list, and kids are out of school in May, right? And so, if you start collecting in April, and you receive your first deposit in May, the kids just got out of school, you're not going to be swimming in pools. the kids just got out of school, you're not going to be swimming in pools in the summer of 2022. I just want to make that clear, that it's not, you know, you snap your finger, but what we can do is, as the deputy city manager said, start the RFP and specification design services perhaps, and so at least when you start to get your initial collections, you can start doing some things, but I just wanted to make that clear because some may expect to be swimming in new pools in the summer of 2022 and then even with that, construction takes, you know, just, it takes, you know?
It takes time.
Time. So I just kind of want to pause to be clear about that. And I know a lot of people interested in clubhouse renovations, you know, but these are pay as you go and we're ready to get it done, you just gotta get the money in hand, but I just wanted to make those points.
Other questions on the SPOS? Just to provide an update on the Sanovis property purchase, just as a reminder, this is 249,000 square feet, 3.59 acres, 634 space parking facility, and it is for structures and that parking facility in Uptown Columbus. The general terms of that agreement, 25 million is the purchase price, closing date no later than March 1st of '22. Sanovis will vacate three of the four buildings at the end of July and then the final building July of '24. There is, as part of the agreement, to be a lease agreement for them to continue to occupy certain space through 2024, so the net purchase price is 24.5 million. There will be the issuance of bonds, which council has already approved of 50 million for the acquisition and the renovation of those buildings. We anticipate that debt service to be estimated at .50 mils, a half a mil, but no overall millage increases anticipated in FY '23. Departments that will relocate from the government center include those executive management, mayor, city manager, city attorney's office, as well as administrative offices, the finance department, human resources, information technology in the clerk of council's office, and then also those departments from the annex will relocate to this facility. And then we're also evaluating public works administration, record storage, and the finance department revenue division to put all of those general government operations into one facility. So the timeline for acquisition, we're finalizing the negotiations, we'll have the execution of the purchase and sale agreement and lease agreement done this month with Sanovis. We are preparing all the bond documents along with the SPOS documents, we'll have two bonds at the same time, one for the Columbus Building Authority and one general obligation bond, but we're able to put those on the same timeline, so that does save us money to have those on the same timeline. So this timeline mirrors what you saw with the SPOS bonds in order to have the bond closing in February and closing date no later than March 1st.
All right, Councilor Woodson?
Yes, Deputy Hodge, I just had a question. Where it says clerk of council office, is that also going to be the space that myself and Councilor Tucker kept asking we need it?
Yes, ma'am.
For council for meeting? We just did a sidebar and she asked me, I said, I hope it's under that.
Yes.
So, thank you.
The timeline for the renovation and occupancy of the Sanovis building is in direct correlation to the timeline of the judicial center. Part of that timeline requires that offices vacate the government center tower in order for the individuals in the wings to have a space to go so that the demolition of the wings and the parking garage, so this timeline is in direct correlation to the timeline for the judicial center. We are finalizing the space study, working with our consultants to determine which departments will go where in the Sanovis building, and when that is done, they'll begin preparing all the plans so that the renovation can occur right after Sanovis vacates from the Jordan, the Bradley and the Uptown Center in August of '22. We anticipate that to take about till February of '23. That will be our planned occupancy for those three buildings and then as soon as they're, as soon as they vacate the main office, renovation of that space will take place in order to occupy that space in February of '25. And just a brief update on the jail assessment master plan, council did authorize us to do a full assessment and master plan of the jail site. The tour took place yesterday with our consultants to look at all aspects of the jail facility, the support, the healthcare, the mental health, the housing, administrative spaces. They will be also reviewing and forecasting jail staffing and the inmate data to look at the current organizational structure and then also the population trends for inmates in order to prepare a master plan for future additions and development at the jail site. They'll look at square footage and improvements and develop that master plan diagram, also including recorder's court and the sheriff's administration, and then provide us a report and a cost estimate hopefully by the end of March of '22. So we are working with the sheriff's office in that evaluation as well. Happy to answer any additional questions on any of these projects.
You did a good job, didn't appear to be, here we go, Councilor Crabbe?
Just a quick question, when you're talking about the main office for the Sanovis building, is that the bank?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
On the corner of Broadway and 12th.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Huff?
Yeah, if you're finished with that, I just have a separate question.
Councilor Huff, is your question to the updates?
Yeah, go ahead, I want it.
Councilor Huff?
Since the revenue division that's here may wind up moving down to the Sanovis building, does this money cover whatever gets done to this building to change the use of that space for whoever it's gonna get? Or is that gonna be a separate issue, we're gonna have to?
That will be a separate discussion, what happens to the space and does any renovations need to take place for someone to occupy that space?
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Huff?
Yes. I had a constituent that called you and me yesterday and he wanted you, while you at the microphone, to update as far as the construction piece between Shelby and Levy or whatever on Fort Benning Road. Said it seems to have been no activity over the past four or five weeks.
And I'll let Director Pruitt answer that question. Mr. Dean did contact me yesterday and I asked Director Pruitt, he's the project manager in his old role and finishing out that project in the engineering department.
He assured me, Mr. Dean assured me, he'd be listening, so.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so on Fort Benning Road there, between Shelby and Levy, there was a utility conflict with some of the storm drainage at that little shopping center, so we did have to go in and replace a lot of pipe in that area and then in addition, there was a elevation bust in the plans, so we had to design and come up with a retaining wall to put between the trail and the parking lot, so the contractors pouring that wall now, as soon as they get that complete, they'll be able to come in and pave and finish it out, so we're still, I'm hoping by the end of this month really, that everything's looking complete.
Okay, thank you for the update.
I think that's it for the questions. So, Mr. Mayor, the final update is the finance update.
Good morning, is it afternoon or morning? Good afternoon. So the finance update, some of you, you've heard some of this information, this is for September, we are actually in the process of closing out the month of October, so next week's council meeting, I hope to have October's report to you all as well. Some of the information here in terms of the changes for the various funds, particularly the general fund, you'll hear me say this frequently throughout the fiscal year as it relates to our revenue sources, because of some one-time revenue sources that we've received in FY '21, I just would like to highlight what, how that impacts our FY '22 standing as far as our revenues. So starting on the right side of the snapshot here, the general fund is showing that it's down 9.17 percent. Again, that is due to the one-time audit revenue that we received from the Department of Revenue last year. Had it not been for that one-time revenue source, the general fund for FY '22 would actually be up about 12 percent. The same holds true for the other local option sales tax fund, as reported here, just based on the revenues that we've received, it has an appearance of being down 25.81 percent, again, due to the one-time audit monies. Excluding those one-time audit monies, that fund would actually be up about 12 percent. The stormwater sewer fund is up 86.28 percent, and you'll see that on this revenue report as we sort of go through the first half of the fiscal year here. I mean, that's due to the revenues being mainly from property tax revenues. Our property tax first installment date for FY '21 was actually October 15th. This year it was October 1st, which is our normal date, so we received those collections a little bit sooner this year than we did last year, so that's why it's showing those extraordinary increases there. Same with the paving fund being up 51.89 percent, the medical center fund being up over 114 percent, again, those tax-supported funds. The integrated waste fund here is showing to be up 2.9 percent. This does not include the revenues, the waiver, the impact of the fee waiver will actually be reported in the next report. It's showing right now that that fund is down from a revenue standpoint of about 25 percent, but we're still working to close out October, and again, that number will be finalized in the next report presented to council. The emergency telephone fund is down 1.41 percent. This is due to the prepaid wireless surcharges being down just a little bit for September. The economic development authority fund has a 114 percent increase. Again, it is a fund that is primarily supported with property tax revenue. The same goes for the debt service fund, it's up 34.31 percent. The transportation fund, up 46 and a half percent. It also receives property tax revenue. The annual budget for Metra, the transportation fund, is about 3.5 million in property tax revenue and so it's receiving some of those benefits as well. The trade center fund is up over 101.25 percent, and that is due to the facility being able to host more events. All of the revenue sources that is related to their events are up compared to FY '21. They also receive a hotel motel allocation. The hotel motel tax is up about 76 percent when compared to FY '21. The Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is down 6.75 percent. They have seen some increases in the snack bar and merchandise revenue, but the general operating revenues right now are down for Bull Creek. However, Oxbo Creek is up 21.82 percent. The Civic Center Fund is up 587 percent, and that is, that extraordinary increase from this year to last year is due to that shuttered venues grant that they received. They actually are anticipating, we are anticipating of receiving supplemental grant for this, from this same source of about 200,000, so we expect to receive that any day now. The first allocation was about 800,000 that we received.
Hang on just a second, Councilor Woodson?
I'm sorry, but I'm ready to spend some money. The Civic Center on that grant that we're getting ready to use, will we be using that to do some repairs at the Civic Center? Because I know when the air conditioning has been running a lot, there's dripping water into ceilings and that's all coming, looks ugly if you happen to look up in the ceiling.
Well, Director Landers and I have had some conversations about some of the improvements that's needed to the facility. This particular grant is very specific on how these funds could be utilized. We have to cover utilities, payroll, some maintenance, but largely payroll and utility costs is the justification for us utilizing these particular funds, but we are in discussion about some of those. We actually had a meeting yesterday.
Awesome.
To talk about some of those items. I know they have some items, renovations that are on the SPOS list, but there are some things that we'll come back to council with at some point soon concerning some of the other updates at the facility.
Thank you. I'm interested because the Civic Center is being used more and more every day and it's got wear and tear, it needs to be upgraded so we don't have the same problem that we've had in the government center or any other projects, so thank you for keeping an eye on that.
Yes, ma'am. Moving down the snapshot to the older local option sales tax, public tax fund, public safety summary, revenues that we've collected to date is about 5.1 million expenditures as far as our current obligations at about 9.1 million. For the infrastructure side of the house, we've reported about 2.1, almost 2.2 million in revenues for FY '22 with about 1.9 million in expenditures. So if you move to the left side of the snapshot, you'll see the general fund expenditures there by department. The goal at this particular point in time is to be at 75 percent or better. The first highlighted department here, it does list the clerk of council at the 75 percent, no worries there, that's due to an annual payment for the Munico software that we utilize, and so that'll fizzle out as we go further on throughout the fiscal year. The city attorney's litigation here, 67 percent. The information technology department, again, we have several software lease and maintenance agreements that are due at the very beginning of the fiscal year. Try to structure those with the vendors so that they're not due at the beginning of the fiscal year, but sometimes it just doesn't work out that way. We have the employee benefits here on the watch list and that is due to our annual death benefit and major disability payments that we make at the beginning of each fiscal year, so again, this will sort of level out as we go, excuse me, as we go throughout the fiscal year. We have our engineering department listed here. This is due to our annual payment for Motorola for radio maintenance, that is a contract that payment is made at the very beginning of the fiscal year, again, one of those things we expect to level out as we go throughout the year. The jury manager is listed here, that's due to the jury summon, subscription fees and the petted jury fees. The courts are really sort of kicking back up and so we're paying out, you know, obviously the petted jury fees that we have to pay the jurors to show up every day. And then there is the monthly maintenance, I mean, I'm sorry, the monthly contract for the public defenders office. That contract amount is paid in advance, so, and that is an item that's here every year, but no worries in that regard for the public defenders office as it relates to that contract. And that in a nutshell is the finance update, I'm sorry, I'm sniffing here, but my nose is draining and it's cool. I'll take any questions though, if you have any.
Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. I wanted to go back to the grant, that, the grants that the Civic Center is getting, and I know that the Civic Center, there's some projects on the SPOS. So is it possible, since this is pay as you go, could we use those grants to do the SPOS repairs and then with the grant money and then it just, we reimburse the grant to the Civic Center from the SPOS?
No.
Okay, that's a no-no.
No.
Okay.
Now, because we were very specific in what we would utilize that money for.
Okay, well, but we would be using it for the project. Oh, are you saying for the grant money?
For the grant money.
I see, okay, okay. Okay, and then what were the projects that the grant money is going to?
Well, we have, it's expenses, not necessarily projects.
Oh, okay.
Payroll expenses, utilities, some maintenance, but it's largely payroll and utilities.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's to cover the fact that they were shut down and not doing business and all that?
Right, it's to provide relief for that.
Okay. That's all the questions. Mayor, that concludes my agenda today.
Okay, I think Councilor Crabbe had
Okay. I think Councilor Crabbe had something she wanted to bring up, ask consideration. Councilor?
I would like for us to take into consideration, or I'd like to request, a change in the time for the December 7th meeting to nine o'clock instead of 5:30, just because we have a, a lot of obligations at nighttime during the month of December, and so I would like to make that request.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion as to changing the time. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. It passes. All right, we'll move on to the clerks' agenda. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilors. With regards to the previous vote, I will bring back a resolution to ratify this oral resolution.
Okay, thank you.
For the clerks' agenda, item one is being withdrawn. Item two are minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilor Woodson. All in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Approved.
Have an add-on resolution to excuse Councilor Barnes from today's meeting.
Motion to excuse Councilor Barnes by Mayor Pro Tem, second from Councilor Woodson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
And Mr. Mayor, I would like to also include a resolution to excuse Councilor Thomas from today's meeting.
Motion second to approve Councilor Thomas's absence. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, please say aye. Any against?
Item number three, board appointments. Mr. Mayor, we have for you the pensioned fine employees board of trustee, the seat of Jack Kingsman. He serves in the retired city employee representative seat.
Yeah, I've got a few that I'm considering. I'll have it for you for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item four, council appointments that are ready for confirmation for the personnel review board, the seat of Mr. Torres Goodwin.
Motion to confirm Mr. Goodwin, and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. He is confirmed.
Also for the personnel review board, the seat of Mr. Dennis Walsh.
Motion to confirm Mr. Walsh by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilor House. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Mr. Walsh is approved.
And the personnel review board, the seat of?
All right, Ms. Walker was, the motion to confirm Ms. Walker was made by Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry, by Councilor Woodson, and who's second? Councilor House? All right, Councilor House made the second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Ms. Walker's, Ms. Walker is confirmed.
Next, we have a council appointment. This will require a vote tabulation for the board of tax assessors, the seat of Chester Randolph. Councilor House has nominated Alice Grantham for this seat, and Councilor Davis has nominated Kathy Jones. Is the council ready to take that vote? Okay, great. Mayor Pro Tem, Allen. Councilor Crabbe? Councilor Davis? Councilor Garrett? Councilor House? Councilor Huff? Councilor Tucker? Councilor Woodson? Ms. Jones has seven votes. She may be confirmed.
Motion confirmed from Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilor Garrett. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Pass, she's confirmed. He's, she's confirmed.
Next, we have council district appointments. For the recreation advisory board, the seat of James Wilkoff, this is the District Two representative, and the seat of Letitia Stevens-Archieball, this is District Three. Thank you, Councilor Huff. We, next we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the animal control advisory board, the seat of Kristin Nulay, this seat is open for nominations. For the board of health, Councilor Barnes is nominating Dr. Joy Attabau for the seat of Dr. Chokhar, and we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the corporate extension advisory board, the seat of Margaret Higdon, she is eligible to serve another term. However, we have not confirmed with her her interest in continuing to serve. For the development authority, Mayor Pro Tem is nominating Dallas Copeland for the seat of the late Jackie Lowe, and Councilor Barnes is nominating Janice Granville for the seat of Lisa Smith, and we will bring these two back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the personnel review board, the seat of Tracy Walker, this is her alternate seat. She was just confirmed as a regular member, so this will leave her alternate seat vacant, and it is open for nominations. Also the seat of Darlene Small, who is the alternate member, and Dr. Shanita Pettaway are all, are both alternate members, and these seats are open for nominations. For the uptown facade board, the seat of Alan Udi, this is the uptown business improvement district recommendation. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We do need to go into an executive session to discuss personnel issue. Entertain a motion? Motion for the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Councilor Woodson. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. All right, we are in executive session. All right, we are, we were in executive session, where we discussed personnel matters. No votes were taken. We are now back in the regular session. We've got a motion second to adjourn. Before we call the question, though, we've got Veterans Day coming up next week, and on behalf of the, the consolidated government, let me thank our military veterans, including those that are on, on our city council. This, this city would not thrive as it does without the presence, leadership, economic impact, and contributions of people who have left the military and who are currently serving in the military. So Columbus, above many other cities, owes the, owes these veterans a special thank you. So please know that we are grateful for you and that we appreciate what you do. Now, we have a motion second to, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned.